For those of you all who don't know me, I've been in this community since the mid 90s, but I've only been in this position as director for ten months. So I'm excited about this. I'm excited about having this joint meeting with our community. Apparently, we haven't had joint meetings since before the pandemic. So it's nice to have everyone here. And I'm really excited that we're having this joint city-county planning commission talk about this very important topic. I have a change of course is an existential issue that we face as a community. And we have to do something that's broader than just our individual jurisdictions. So I'm excited to have this opportunity, very excited to hear what the planning commission has to say. For tonight's meeting, we set aside roughly about two, two and a half hours. And a second, I'm going to ask Chair Missel to convene the county planning commission and Chair Mitchell to convene the city's planning commission. You need to bathrooms are back towards the main foyer right there. I think the ladies is in the one and the men's is just past with the big glass wall that's beyond. It's a joint public hearing where it's here for time for the planning commission to speak. We won't necessarily be taking comments from the general public either online or here in the room. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Missel and go ahead and be in the meeting.
Awesome. Thanks, Michael. So I will officially convene, hold the order, the Alamooral County Planning Commission meeting for October 29th. And I've been told I can simply acknowledge the members of the planning commission present. So we'll start with Mr. Vivens, Mr. Moore, Commissioner Firehawk, Commissioner Claiborne, Commissioner Carazana, and yours truly. And with that, I'll turn it over.
In terms of we've got eight borough houses, well, we've got Commissioner Rethka, Commissioner Stolzner, Commissioner Adria, Commissioner Sollyhates, Commissioner Yoda, and Commissioner Schwartz. So we are in order. And Commissioner Joy. You are hiding my major.
Well, thanks. Michael asked me to prepare a few comments. I have about 25 minutes of comment to start with. No, I'm kidding. No, but I'll just kick it off. First of all, it's great to see you all, to meet many of you for the first time. You know, we oftentimes get in our little silos where we're working on our own projects in our own spaces, whether it's the University, the county, the city, or others. This is obviously not one of those subjects that we should be silent in, right? This is, I think, the resilient together is truly a perfect conversation, a perfect title. And I'm really looking forward to having that conversation together today. I will just say a couple of things just from a matter of structure. I think we're thinking that this is really just a workshop format, so relatively straightforward and informal. I think staff would prefer us to wait until after the end of the presentation to ask questions. But if there are maybe minor clarifications that we have throughout the process, we're fine to do that. We can ask that. And then just to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to share their comments. Once we've heard from staff, and really just first a shout out to the city, the county, the university staff who have put this together, I should have said that at the very beginning. No pressure, but I'm sure this is fantastic. So thank you for leading us through this. What I'll probably do is just start by calling on people or asking if somebody wants to pick us off. And then maybe we'll alternate city-county just to show how we're joined in this conversation together. And we'll do that kind of formally upfront. And then once everybody's had a chance to say a few things, we'll open it up to more of a workshop sort of back and forth banter process. Does that make sense to everybody?
Okay.
All right. Well, I'll stop talking and turn it over to you all. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Commissioner Missel. Thank you all for being here this evening. We appreciate your time and interest in the topic and pulling together a project. So maybe I'll just introduce myself and Emily first, and then we'll do a round of introductions of our project team, just so you know who's with us in support of this effort. I'm Gabe Daly. I'm the Climate Action Program Manager for Alamooral County, one of the co-managers of this project.
And I'm Emily Urban. I am Gabe's counterpart in the city. So I'm the Climate Program Manager for the city, and we are co-managing this project together.
Thanks, Emily. So just a kind of agenda for the presentation portion nested within the broader agenda that Mr. Missel just laid out for us. We're going to give brief introductions to other members of our Resilient Together project team who are here from city-county UVA. We're going to give a bit of context for why we're doing this work, for some of the local impacts of climate change that we're experiencing and how we expect those to have effects in our community. We'll talk a bit about the Resilient Together project itself, where we've been with that and where we're headed. We'll speak about the Climate Resilience Cohort, which is a kind of centerpiece of the Resilient Together project, the bit of a project within a project that's funded through an EPA environmental justice grant that we were able to receive. We'll speak about next steps in terms of our work this fall, next spring. And then we'll get into some conversation. I guess we'll leave some room for questions generally about, you know, what you've seen. And then we'll get into some conversation about inviting your input on a couple of example strategies. So we're heading into the next number of months really doing strategy development. And we thought it would be hopefully interesting, fun, and useful for the planning commissions to give us some feedback and have some conversation about a couple such example strategy options for building resilience in our community to combat climate change. So that'll kind of close us out for the evening and have a little bit more interactive element here. So we introduced ourselves. Also want to introduce Julia Montieth and Serena Gria, who are, we asked to sit up at the front with us in case you have questions about UVA and kind of how UVA is playing in this process, things that maybe we can't answer about the project as a whole. But Julia, we're giving the Office of the Architect at UVA, core member of the project team. And then Serena is our Public Engagement Coordinator for Alamooral County. And so I wanted her to be able to be here to speak as well to some of the community engagement aspects of the project. And then also would like to just point out our friends and colleagues on the side behind a couple of members of the County Planning Commission, Crystal Riverbould, Director of the Office of Sustainability at the city, Greg Harper, Chief of Environmental Services at Alamooral County, and Jamie Powers, Climate Action Project Manager with the county. So thanks to all for being here with us as well. I think Emily, it's over to you.
Great. Yeah. All right. Hey, everybody. Thank you again for having us. We're really excited to be here at this first joint planning commission meeting in quite a while. So I'm going to say, I'm going to talk a little bit about our regional hazards and the impacts we expect to see from climate change. We think it's important to sort of set the table for this conversation and revisit and have a common understanding of what we're really doing here together this evening. So I'm going to talk about how central in Virginia is being impacted by climate change and how we expect to be more impacted in the future. So many folks think of climate change as a future hazard. I do think as we witness impacts and natural disasters around the globe and around the country, and most recently among in our own state and our neighboring state, it is really becoming more present for people because we are being impacted now and we will continue to be more impacted in the future. So I'm going to walk through the hazards we expect to see here. Both the city and county have done climate risk and vulnerability assessments. And so I'm going to go over our hazards because remarkably, they said nearly the same thing. Anyway, so one of our most, I think, one of the impacts that we are, have recently felt is the incidence of extreme heat is increasing in our region. So in this context, extreme heat is a technical term. It refers to a day where the temperature gets above 95 degrees Fahrenheit in a given day. So our historical average was we experienced about five days of extreme heat every summer. I think we saw more days than that this past summer. I think we can think back to some really periods of really hot days and think about how that is starting to impact our community. By mid-century, we expect to see nearly a month of these extremely hot days each summer. And by 2075, we could see nearly two months of these extremely hot days. And so this project is contemplating how we will adapt our systems to be better able to stand that. So another impact that we expect to see in our region is increased incidence of drought periods between rain, instances of rain. We were in a drought period before Hurricane Helene visited our region, and we had nine inches of rain in just a few days before that. Our area had declared a drought watch. And that has a relationship with another hazard that we expect to see, which is increased flooding. So even though we will have longer periods between rain, we will have more intense rain events. So we expect to see increased precipitation and increased amount of precipitation in any given event. And when you have dryness from periods of drought and then you experience a particularly heavy or intense rain event, the ground is not able to absorb that moisture in the way it is when it is more evenly moist. And so then you get more flooding. So the way that these hazards interact together exposes our community, our area, to this increased precipitation. So when all of that is taken together, we see that our seasons are changing. And so that has an impact especially on our natural environment. We are adapted here in central Virginia to experience periods of cold in the winter. You can see that our historical data shows that over the past 30 years, our average has been more than two months of days over the winter period where we get below freezing. And so that's really important for keeping pests at bay, invasive plant species. That is the, our ecosystem is adapted to that. And so as the, as we experience overall warming and we see fewer of these days where we get a frost, you can see this data shows by the time we get to the end of the century, we're predicted to see less than a month of days over the winter where it gets below freezing. So that has this knock on our secondary impact of increasing the risk of pests and disease in our, in our region. And so everyone kind of hates when I show this slide because it's a visceral reminder. But we'll have more times of the year where these invasive pests that harm both our natural environment and pose a threat also to humans, longer periods of the year where these are active. So ticks and mosquitoes are active for a longer period of the year. Our ecosystems that are adapted to periods of cold are not as able to fight off disease invasive species, that thing, that kind of thing. One climate fun fact I always like to share when I'm talking about this slide is poison ivy actually really thrives when there's higher concentrations of CO2 in the atmosphere. So when you have more CO2 in the atmosphere, the toxins that are in poison ivy are actually more concentrated and stronger. So another knock on it. So one hazard that we did not really contemplate when the city and county were doing our risk and vulnerability assessments back in 2022 is wildfire smoke. The county's risk and vulnerability assessment does consider wildfire, and there's a small increased risk as we move into the future. But we didn't, neither of them contemplate smoke. And I think everyone in this room can probably remember last summer and fall when we had smoke from Canadian wildfires, smoke from other fires in the region that were really impacting our community. And so children, older folks, folks with pre-existing conditions, our homeless neighbors, folks who work outside are particularly impacted by this decrease of our regional air. So now I'm going to turn it back over to Gabe to talk a little bit about what adapting to these changes in our environment could look like.
So a couple of concepts that we wanted to make sure everyone has a shared understanding of. I'm guessing that these are familiar to many, if not most folks, but we wanted to put it out there. There's a couple of technical terms that we work with in the climate action space. One of those being mitigation, the other one being adaptation. Adaptation and resilience are often put together, so you'll see us use both of those terms. City and county both have climate action plans. Those climate action plan and UVA has climate targets, including a strategic plan to reach goals for reducing emissions. So so those plans are all focused for all three entities on what's called mitigation or reducing the severity of climate change and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And then what this project is focused on for city-county and UVA is how do we adapt? Because we didn't take strong enough action as a global community 20, 30, 40 years ago. So there are some changes that are baked in that, as folks know, we're already starting to see the impacts of. So as we engage in mitigation work, how do we also adapt to and build resilience to those kinds of impacts from a changing climate, from intensifying weather events like those that Emily just described? There's a lot of overlap between the two. So this is just a few examples to make the Venn diagram manageable. We started listing out more and realized it would be textually overwhelming on a slide. So there's lots that's not, not stated here just to give examples. But there are some actions that we can take that are really focused on the emissions reduction side. They don't have much to do with adaptation resilience. And likewise, there are some actions we can take that really focus on the adaptation, the resilience side. Don't really do anything for us in terms of emissions reduction. But there's a lot that we can do that covers both that's integrative. And so that's something that we're thinking about as we, you know, move into the strategy development for our climate resilience plans is how can we prioritize the kinds of strategies that will help achieve both results, recognizing that there may also be a need to do some that are on one side. So the next few slides, we wanted to tease out a little bit more the, almost like a chain of events or a kind of flow chart from these increased likelihood of hazards or increased risks that Emily was talking about in terms of extreme weather events and trends. And like, how does that actually lead into harmful impacts that people in our community will experience? So we're going to, we're going to walk you through a couple of flow charts to illustrate how that might look for just kind of two hazards together. And we've got some additional ones that we can include in a slide deck we share with you all afterwards. But for the sake of time, we'll just use one. To tee that up, we wanted to show this chart, which comes from NOAA, and I think gives a helpful visual for overall what we're trying to do with the resilience work. So the chart on the left shows, you know, an example of you. By the way, you could look at these charts at an individual level or a family system or really any kind of system. But here we're looking at them from the perspective of a community system in the context of climate change. So you could have a community that's kind of chugging along, business as usual, gets hit by some kind of acute hazard, maybe a hurricane, intense flooding, maybe a heat wave or wildfire. And there's going to be some kind of shock to the system, some harm in the short term that comes from that. And sometimes that community might bounce back. But it's also possible that, you know, the initial shock is so intense that even after a period of recovery, there's a permanent loss. The community doesn't quite make it back to where they were before. On the, on the right is what we're looking to do with this climate resilience work. Okay, so if we can make investments to build resilience now, you know, before the next big hazerder shock to the system, there will still be short-term harms, right, short-term adverse impacts. But hopefully, because the investment's upfront, we can bounce back and be better off, be stronger as a community. So to make that a little bit more concrete with a couple of examples, I'll walk you through this one briefly. Emily talked a few minutes ago about the interplay between drought and intense rainfall and how those can lead to increasingly likely flood of flooding. And but it's not just the hazard or the extreme weather event, right? There's also ways in which some community members might be more exposed to that. So there, we know there are some buildings in the area that are in the floodplain, right? So that's something that might increase a household's or person's exposure to flooding. We also know that having a lack of stream buffer, right, increases likelihood of that flooding inland and the intensity of the flooding. There might also be vulnerability that's more specifically at the household level. So not so much exposure to the hazard, but, but a more vulnerable situation for a family who's living nearby. So maybe an older building less able to hold up against intense rainstorms. Just this was, there was no, no adverse impact particularly. But recently, I had a small roof leak from during one of the rain events, actually the one that preceded Helene the week before that, but had a small roof leak from that. So I'm thinking about things like that. But if it's worse for someone, their building. And then when you combine those three, the hazard itself, potential additional exposure, household vulnerability, you get impacts, right? So you might get displaced families, cost of repairs that could be particularly financially challenging for some folks, maybe help impacts from exposure to moisture and things like that. So broad view, what can we do to build some of those, build resilience in advance? Make those investments from the chart on the previous slide? Well, we might do something to address vulnerability at the household level. So I think about the work that Alamooral Housing Improvement Program does in the community, that Local Energy Alliance Program also does to help out at the household level, make buildings more resilient. We can also think about a lot of work that happens in the county around stream buffers and financing to, you know, help landowners be able to increase stream buffers on their population. We can think about, you know, how do we make sure that although there's some historical buildings, certainly in the floodplain and that floodplain may be growing, how can we, you know, plan for the future in terms of, you know, making sure that folks don't build in a present or future floodplain if that grows? So putting all that together leads to something that I think Emily has alluded to previously with the fact that we share similar risks and vulnerabilities for us, for our region, why work together? The impetus for this project came out of a conversation between myself and Emily's predecessor at the city, who reached out to me and said, hey, you know, we're doing these climate vulnerability and risk assessments. We're starting to see more of these impacts. You know, should we be thinking about working together between our two jurisdictions and University of Virginia on resilience planning process for the community? Because, you know, the extreme rain and flooding event or the heat wave doesn't particularly care where the jurisdictional boundary is. So that was kind of the, the impetus for this project. And Emily's fond of saying that, you know, knowing your neighbors is, is the best first step, right, for, for building resilience, for emergency preparedness. So we've been working on this partnership for quite a while now. And it's been fruitful in terms of the kinds of feedback that we've gotten from our colleagues, from subject matter experts in each of the institutions and also from the broader community that surrounds us. I think I'm turning it back over to you next to you.
Thank you.
Talk about the project.
So I will share, Crystal and I were at a conference, USD and our Urban Sustainability Directors Network in Minneapolis last week, and we were there. Some of our colleagues from Asheville were also there. And they were telling stories about coming together with their neighbors after Helene. And I felt, well, first of all, very humbled that we're having this conversation as our community. But also, it was sort of reassuring to me that we're coming at this work with that spirit of getting to know your neighbors as a foundational step. We're trying to live that and model that in working together on this project. And if we can just help to strengthen relationships within the community and like strengthen the webs and networks that are already holding our community in place through this project, we will really be actually building and modeling resilience. So just wanted to add that. Anyway, that's, that's what we're doing here. No, but so after we, Gabe said, why do this work together? And so we did come together to start saying like, how can this project unfold? How can we do this work together? So UVA came into this conversation early. Gabe and Serena did some very important foundational work. And what we're trying to do here is really use this project to convene a community conversation about building resilience to the impacts of climate change that we're going to be experiencing and strengthen our community, our community really in a holistic way. So our vision for this project is a strong and safe and healthy community for everyone who calls Charlottesville an Alamooral home now and into the future. And so there are some specific deliverables that will come out of the Resilient Together project. Those are climate resilience plans that will be adopted by each jurisdiction. We're going to develop them in parallel. And then for ease of local government processes, we will have two separate plans that are adopted. We'll talk a little bit later in the presentation about how that interacts with existing projects and then documents, comprehensive plans and things. But what we also really want to build through this project is an implementation framework. We don't want this to just be another plan that is really difficult to implement. But, but by through the project, and I hope with just systems that we are, we helped to build through, through doing this engagement and intense work together, we are really building a framework for investing in our community and making it more resilient. So this is our project outline. We put this star here. We are here. We are going to talk through where we've been and look forward. But the discover phase, which we kicked on a little over a year ago, we wanted to share some of the information that we have shared with you all this evening about our hazards and risks with the community and also hear from the community how they are being impacted. We've had a series of staff workshops. We've done a lot of community engagement. I'll talk in a little bit more detail about that in a moment. The define phase is really making sure we're solid in what we heard from the community before we move on to the real exciting meat of the project, which is designing the strategies that we'll employ in our community. And then the decide phase will be really creating those plans, going through the bureaucratic process of having them adopted. And then do is where we, you know, really implement the work. And that's kind of will be ongoing into the future. And I'll talk later about how we have been learning from peer communities and how some other communities are moving from planning into implementation. So like I said, we kicked off the discover phase, the first public facing phase of this project back in October of 2023. We had a number of workshops, a few of them right here in this room. We gathered staff from across the city, the county and UVA, and also some of our regional sort of quasi-governmental partners, the Planning District Commission, the RIVANA authorities, the Soil and Water Conservation District staff from those organizations also joined us as subject matter experts. We had some workshops with community organizations. We were at a number of community events trying to just get the word out about what, how we were thinking about this and how our community will be impacted. So we also got some feedback that there are many members of the community who have been asked repeatedly what they want and what they need. And there's a little bit of engagement fatigue. So we also tried to learn from other planning, recent planning processes like AC44 and Seville Plants Together to integrate some of that community input into our, into what we have put forward in the define phase. So the define phase, we started over the summer. We are just getting to the end of it. Although we're going to talk about Gabe mentioned our climate resilience cohort, which is a very important project within the project. And we are trying to, since that piece of the project is funded by a federal grant, it took us a little bit of time to get through the grant machinations to be able to put a cohort off. So we are, we want to share our draft principles and goals with the cohort and with staff before we call it final. So we're just wrapping up define and transitioning into the design. So also during that time, we have been researching and refining a list of potential resilient strategies that could work in our community. Of course, we are not the only community doing this. We are trying to learn from larger communities, areas that have done this before. The federal government through their climate resilience toolkit gives us a great database of strategy options from plans from all over the country. And we have been really like combing through those lists to create a draft list of strategies that are suitable for our area based on our hazards, our geography, the size of our community, the fact that we're Dillon Rule um based on our hazards, our geography, the size of our community, the fact that we're Dillon Roll State, all types of, you know, the local context, what we can do in our community. So uh it's been wonderful to collate what we have heard from the community into some concrete outputs. And I hope that you all had an opportunity to look at the report that we put published as part of um the packet for this evening. But so we distilled what we heard into these nine themes. Um I know a lot of you all have been doing engagement around major planning processes recently. So probably, I hope this doesn't surprise anyone in this room that this is what we heard from the community that they really care about. And I do want to clarify, when I'm talking about reliable systems, that includes infrastructure, our food systems, sort of those um community systems and hardened infrastructure systems that really support the day-to-day life and work of our community. Um and so from there, we took the themes and we drafted these six guiding principles. Um and these again are in our report, I don't want to necessarily read them um verbatim. But um we felt like these six items really rose to the top as things that we need to keep as our north star as we move through this project. Um and then also, these seven goals seem like really good broad outcomes that if we can work towards these goals throughout this process and project and as we move into implementation, um we will really be building resilience in our community. And so what I wanted to say also is Mr. Barnes said at the outset of this meeting that climate change is an existential issue. And it is, and it is a threat multiplier, but it's also a symptom of a deeper problem that uh because many of our systems are built on extraction and exploiting people in the environment. And if we reexamine some of those ways that we interact with other people and with our environment, are the place we live in here, we will really be helping to address some of those underlying causes that cause us to be less resilient. So we really do believe that if we can kind of embody the principles and work towards those goals, we will be working together to really build a community that is truly resilient. So strategy development, this is the exciting, we're standing on the precipice of this part of the project. Um it feels exciting, so we have been working to define this locally relevant list. Uh we also don't want to reinvent the wheel here. And we know there's a lot of excellent plans that exist through uh through the region, all three entities. So we are also beginning the work of comparing our draft list with what is already uh planned for or happening in the community. Because if we take existing plans and structures and either strengthen the connections on them or, you know, use them as a foundation to build upon, um you know, that is, we'll be taking advantage of our existing systems and not reinventing them. So as we move into this design phase engagement that will be part of this next phase, uh we want to ask ourselves these three kind of foundational questions. So like, what are the midterm outcomes? What are the impacts we're looking to see? And then when we think about the the answer to those questions, what is locally relevant? Because this is so place-based, it's really important that the strategies that we develop work for this community. Because what works in other places may not be what works here in Charlottesville. So I alluded to this, we've been doing a lot of learning from other peer communities. Um the staff involved in this project, we're all members of these networks of folks doing this type of work at a local government level. Um we have great connections with, um we hold, we actually included a link to Fairfax's resilient Fairfax Plan in the packet. We hold this up as such a great example. We have a great relationship with the um some of the staff in Fairfax who are the lead on developing this for their community. They've been very generous with their experience and expertise. And that's been a great resource to learn from folks who are further ahead of this process. Um I said, we, I mentioned, we've been relying on this federal um tool uh that is helping communities be able to do this resilience planning work. Um the EPA has uh regional plans for resilience uh for each of the EPA regions. And they they support communities building out from there. So we've been doing a lot of learning from those who um have come before us in this work. All right, now I'm going to let Gabe talk about the cohort, which is a really exciting piece of this project.
Cool, thank you. One, one point that I would love to call out on that last slide. Uh if you remember from a little while ago, Emily had said that we're really aiming for our resilience plans to be structured and written to help guide implementation when they're hot off the press. Uh and that's one of the reasons why we found Resilient Fairfax uh to be a helpful plan to look at, see how I structured it, see how their prioritized strategies have these implementation steps or implementation roadmaps to them. So just to call out um why that one in particular, we've we've been looking at in the context of, you know, what we hope to do with our work.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
They have also really successfully transferred from the planning process into a program for resilience building. And that is something we are also hoping to model as we adopt the plans and move into the do phase.
So the Climate Resilience Cohort, something really excited about, as Emily said, project within a project. Uh we just had our kickoff workshop with the ten uh subgrantees of this cohort yesterday. So we're excited about that, we had an afternoon with them, got to onboard them onto the project. Uh I think given the topic that we're discussing tonight, our folks will appreciate that we had to reschedule that workshop from a month ago. We were supposed to do it on September thirtieth. Uh the night before, one of our colleagues said, hey, you know, do we have any contingency plans regarding the hurricane? Or not as intense, uh anywhere near as intense impacts here as as in our neighbors to the south? But you know, hey, what should we do to be prepared about this? And so we said, well, if this public school districts close, we should probably postpone our workshop because folks might have unanticipated childcare issues and also a barometer of maybe there are some, you know, roads out there that are not safe to cross. So we ended up postponing the workshop. Uh and due to scheduling with ten organizations, ended up being a month later. But we found it, you know, telling and perhaps a bit ironic that we had to reschedule the kickoff session of a Climate Resilience cohort due to a climate change exacerbated storm. Um so we're really excited to to finally get together with folks yesterday and kick off this key piece of the project. So uh it's a partnership with uh ten community-based organizations that serve disadvantaged or vulnerable community members uh to help really ensure that the voices and folks are uh really brought into the project. Um this was uh came from a highly competitive EPA environmental justice grant that uh we applied for as a team, Albemarle County was the lead applicant for that. So we're um kind of the administrator of of the grant, but it's a key piece of this collaborative project. Um and we're providing subgrants to uh to ten, like I said, community-based organizations to partner with us in the work. One of the things that that we know, that I'm sure you all know, is that, you know, uh local governments can have a hard time reaching a lot of folks in a community, right? There's um, you know, there's folks who uh are often more able to or tend to come to, you know, public comment sessions uh to workshops that that local governments hold in their kind of houses of of operation. And we can sometimes have a hard time uh, you know, getting a a broad swath of community perspective. So the intention with this grant is to help leverage the relationships that we have with local community-based organizations and then the uh the relationships that they in turn have with the folks that they serve directly. I'm going to start saying CBOs, I know we have lots of acronyms in local government, but just to shorten that phrase coming off of my um tongue. So this was uh, we got the grant through funding from the Inflation Reduction Act. I've covered a couple of these elements. Um and actually, uh kind of an example of adapting and uh being playful with how we're implementing the project. Originally, we said, let's give an equal forty thousand dollars to each organization. And then we thought about that a little bit further. And we wondered if that was the best approach. And we ultimately decided to pivot where uh each organization is getting a certain chunk of the money to be part of the uh planning part of this process, helping us uh develop and vet the strategies that we've been talking about that will go into our resilience plans. And uh and then there will be an additional pot of money that uh folks will be able to be granted through a second round to do implementation projects. And the the change that we made, rather than giving each organization kind of is uh, maybe it's the clicker. Sure, sure. So we're, we're giving folks the option to pool funds. Um we know that some of these organizations, which we'll show you on the next slide, are uh in collaborations with each other already or have collaborated on various projects. And so we said, well, you know, why don't we give them the the option to uh partner in that? Um and so we'll see what kinds of projects come out of that. We'll be facilitating a kind of participatory design process with them a little later in this first year of the grant um to come to arrive at the projects they'll be doing. Um so really excited about the ten that we've got. Uh there are some of these organizations that we, as the local governments, have worked with in the past. Um we know the kind of uh the kind of community service they do. And there's also some folks that we've never worked with, um where we're cultivating relationships with them. And so we're very excited to be able to uh kind of have that mixture um and also get a sense uh from yesterday of some of the relationships among these organizations that that already exists, as well as some of the new ones that that we already saw um being fostered. So I've alluded to what the kind of timeline and elements of this grant will look like. Um but just to put it on the page for you and and talk through this briefly, basically, there's two parts of the grant. Uh the first part, part one or planning, is overlapping with the remaining phases of the Resilient Together kind of planning portion. So part one here will end when we have adopted resilience plans uh for for our entities. And then part two will kick off. Um and that will be where that second pot of money will come into play. And these organizations will be able to implement pilot projects to kind of hit the ground running uh with with implementing the their resilience plan. So we're excited about this. Um and that kind of feeds back into uh just a few words that I'll say about next steps. Um wanting to come back, Emily showed the kind of side-by-side tiles of uh the Resilient Together project phases, the discover, define, design, decide, and do or implement. Um and so just to revisit a little bit, uh kind of more of a fun image of that for you here, but just to give you that sense again, so we're in between two and three, kind of right on the cusp. Um right there. And uh one of the the pieces I'll just call attention to again, Emily foreshadowed this. And I think now that we've gone through the Climate Resilience cohort, I'll say, so that's this piece, those those themes, guiding principles, long-term goals are what we've penciled in based on what we heard through the project. But that we want to make sure that, you know, this uh back, that this group of ten organizations also have the opportunity to weigh in on that before we, you know, put it into in ink in terms of the uh the project. So looking ahead towards number three and number four here, the design and decide phases of the project. Um in the design phase, we will be taking that information that we've distilled thus far, right? The the goals, the guiding principles, themes we heard. Um and then this research that we've been doing on strategy options uh and putting that together to help bring strategies into the fold that will help us uh meet the goals that we have. And then the decide phase, that's where we'll actually be, you know, doing the work of uh putting everything we have on paper, figuratively speaking, but literally in, you know, Word documents where we're um kind of structuring the information into a plan uh that we can then, you know, request our our elected bodies to adopt and that we can be implementing. There will be a number of elements of engagement, community engagement in the design phase. So also to kind of briefly call back something that Emily said earlier, where we got this feedback about some of the engagement fatigue in the community. Some of that feedback that we received was that while there's uh, while there may be engagement fatigue on kind of general information questions of like, what's working well for you? What's, you know, challenging in your neighborhood? What what needs do you have? Um that there's quite a bit of appetite for really creative design thinking, getting together to craft ideas. And so this phase will have quite a bit of engagement, both through those ten organizations in the Climate Resilience cohort and as well as broader uh community engagement that we're going to be doing kind of in strategic geographic locations across the city and county to try to get as broad swath of the community as we can. Um we'll also continue to meet with uh staff and subject matter experts from uh city, county, UVA, and also some of those additional uh government agencies that that have offices or branches um in the area. And uh lastly, we wanted to make sure to speak to uh just how these fit in with our guiding planning documents um for city and county that if we know the planning commissions are heavily involved in. So uh Seville Plans Together, AC forty-four. So I turn it over to you, Emily, to talk through links there and then I'll say.
Yeah, so um well, one thing I kind of wanted to back up and say, so the city of Charlottesville is part of the Global Covenant of Mayors for Climate and Energy. So we have a commitment to develop a climate action plan and a climate resilience plan. And when we, so we have already adopted our climate action plan. And you all likely remember that we uh went through the extra step of having that be adopted as a, one of the functional pieces, a functional plan underneath the umbrella of our updated comprehensive plan. So it is our hope and intention to be able to do that again um for the climate resilience plan. So we really would like for this plan to become one of those functional plans that is part of the broader umbrella of the comprehensive plan. And speaking of that comprehensive plan, we also know that a lot of our final strategies will cut across more chapters than just the chapter seven related to environment, um climate and food equity. Um so I think we'll hit a lot of chapters. And so just uh foreshadowing, I guess, uh for you all to be thinking ahead about the hope that we do hope to go through that process, having it be an amendment to the comprehensive.
And on the county side, we've actually had the the sort of fruitful opportunity to be doing uh our resilience planning in concurrence with the AC forty-four comprehensive plan update. So we've been able to have a lot of cross-pollination uh with our colleagues in planning on what they're working on as that's in development. Uh we've we've been able to actually, on that theme of of drawing from uh engagement that other colleagues of ours have done, kind of pulling those themes, what those have heard into our work. Uh we also had the opportunity to go to some of the engagement events that they've done through AC forty-four uh where we heard a lot of themes that are relevant to the kind of work that we're doing. So that's been uh quite fruitful for us. There's elements of both climate change mitigation and uh adaptation resilience that that intersect strategies across uh the AC forty-four draft plan. And uh we know that the Resilient Community Chapter will also explicitly integrate some of the SMART goals that we've been developing on the county side with respect to our climate action plan or mitigation plan uh and then all the goals related to this resilience project. So we see those as as um threading together quite nicely. So uh let me maybe pause at this point and just check in with Commissioner Missile. You had mentioned wanting to have a little space for uh some some kind of general questions. We have, so the the next two slides are our kind of potential strategies that we put in the agenda, that we put in the memo to you all um to take a look at in advance. And so I just want to check and and we could go straight into those and invite discussion. But I I didn't want to bypass if you would also like to have an opportunity for general Q and A. So what would uh what's most appropriate there?
Yeah, thank you, that's a a great question. I I think it'd be great to have maybe, I don't know, ten or fifteen minutes if we need it for Q and A right now. Um just because if it's, if everyone else is like me, I've got a bunch of questions that I'd love to throw out there. But um this, why don't we start? I'll just start on this side. Julian, do you want to kick us off with questions, if you have any?
Thank you, thank you, Sharon, thank you, thank you for the, for your presentation. At some point, Gabe, if you would, it would be helpful to understand how the climate, a climate action plan that you developed that we saw in twenty-two, how, what, how that fits into this. And because there were certainly a lot of um the potential deliverables there. We wouldn't have to do it now, but perhaps the planning commission. I was struck, well, in your introduction, when you laid out, you just sort of completed the, you completed the circuit on, certain on that, on your ten partners. And while I can appreciate your ten partners and you sort of describe them as being uh your subgrants, ten community-based organizations that serve disadvantaged community members. And while no one in MICE is going to talk badly about organizations that treat And while no one in MICE is going to talk badly about organizations that treat disadvantaged members of our community, I'd like to have, I would of course like to have a bit more shakedown on what does that mean? Because if I look at some of those individuals from where I stand in other hats that I've worn, I don't know how effective they are doing what you want them to do. And so I will just place that there. The other thing I think is sort of, is it would question me if you're just looking at how do you bring together a group of people who are going to be, who will help you think through the design of what this might look like? There's no one from the for-profit part of this community who will be the individuals who will have to adopt this. And so I don't see anyone here that says, why aren't we bringing in sooner or later? And I'm sure there are people saying, you know, they have a mistrust for the, for the for-profit people, but they're the people who are going to do it. The county and the city have no, have no levers to make those entities do anything, except that they want perhaps a different, a different bit of shading on there. I don't mean shading as in trees, but a bit, a bit more density or something on a piece of property. That's where perhaps the, the leverage comes or the conversation comes. But if you're thinking that this is a, this is a positive for our, for our jurisdiction. But I feel as if there's a, there's a significant gap in not being able to include some people who are in this forum, who, who are actually going to be the ones who are going to have to build this into their process. The other piece that I would also suggest is to be inclusive. Is I thought there would be, this is an opportunity, we hear this at times, certainly in our CACs, those of us, I can't speak for the city, but for the county, as a community advisory group. So I always mess those up and someone has to always help me through that. There are opportunities for people in, for our young people in school who are absolutely dreaming passionately about how do we do this? And so I think there would also be an opportunity for you to reach out to the various schools here. And so perhaps bring a couple of them on here, the students, not the teachers, but the students, to bring a couple of those, those individuals on here, on, on to your planning. Because I think you would get, you, you would get a, 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 a different level of engagement that I think is purposely looking to the future.
Any questions specifically? Why don't we go over to Michael Joy? Michael, do you have any specific questions?
Well, I had a comment, well, there's two that I want to throw out. And the first would be, I know that we're working towards a roadmap to complete this study. It's sort of, you're just kind of on a third, third way in the process. But it'd be interesting, as you're sort of developing what a deliverable is, is to understand that it has, it itself has to be resilient, this deliverable, and that there's sort of a framework that's put in place that this could be an ongoing conversation and be amended and be adapted as, you know, information comes online. So that was just one comment. And then the other one, you know, I'm trying to just look at the climate action plan and it may be redundant with that. But, you know, what conversations are being had with some of the, you know, the bishop, it was the same with some of the for-profit or some of the large utility providers or some aspect. You know, is there an effort to kind of get collaboration and to get on the same page with similar priority sets?
Can I, is that a comment that I can speak to?
Yes.
So we do recognize we need to connect with some of our state-level agencies and our utilities. And we are working to build some of those connections. And we actually have gotten some advice from our friends in Fairfax about how to go about engaging the utilities, engaging our state agencies that may have, you know, something to add to this or we need to know about how they operate to really, you know, work around them in our communities, right? I know in the county especially, he got, has a lot of huge impact. And so we are working to make those connections. And we are also working to try to work through our colleagues to connect with, like, so we've had conversations with our economic development folks, how can we really connect with the business community? Because they do have important input on this project. So we hope that to do some business-specific workshops during the design phase to try to get interest from across the, you know, there's a lot, we would love to connect with developers in the community, right? To see what how they're thinking about this project. So we're ideating how to best be able to do that. We have, it can be hard to get engagement from folks. And so we are trying to be really intentional about, about the asks and so that we can be prepared to have the feedback that we're able to get from different parts of the community, have it be the most impactful for us and the best use of their time. So we're trying to be really intentional about how to do that.
I said one last, just popped in, was, um, one thing that may be helpful is as this thing comes to fruition and you have a final report, is to imagine that report sort of being sort of shared with a larger regional area where they could then adopt components of it. That's sort of making it almost like a series of plugins that could, you know, different areas, which may not have the municipal oversight or the, the resources could sit there and sort of take it and sort of adopt sections in a way that at least has some guiding principles that could help guide their decision making.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thanks. Question?
A little bit, a little bit. I have some questions about the, the, the potential strategies, but we save that for afterward. In the meantime, the first comment is I appreciate the long-term goals. It's really nice list, I put a checkmark by all of them. And I do also appreciate that this is meant to be more about adaptation, this project's focus, rather than say mitigation, which is why I was kind of at a hump moment when I saw that the primary resilient strategy is greenhouse gas reduction, which is mitigation. And I mean, we could be carbon neutral tomorrow in Charlottesville and Alamo County, and it's still going to be 30 days a year that are over 95 in 2015. I mean, I don't want to say like we shouldn't do some things, we should. But, but I feel like if we let that take up the air in the room of the primary strategy, then we're going to miss out on the, the sort of social things and the, the actual adaptation things that are much more necessary. So that just feels like a, you know, some of the, some of the other pieces around communication, collaboration, around strengthening our backup systems and, and electricity systems and water systems and, and so on, would strike me as being more important if we're talking about adaptation rather than mitigation.
Yeah, maybe just briefly, so, and recognizing that, you know, we're, we're just entering into the strategy development, that the reason we made that the, the first guiding principle of kind of how we think through this is, you know, certainly not to have that kind of take up all the air in the room of the actual strategies that go into the plans, but recognizing that, you know, with each kind of increasing year of emissions, we're making that problem worse and making the adaptation and resilience work more difficult. So it's sort of like the first and best thing that we can do from a resilience perspective is to drastically reduce emissions now and flesh that out with, with strategies that are more aimed at just kind of like, you know, putting up bulwarks against storms to come.
Good.
Awesome. Thanks, Betsy.
Um, yeah, to build on that, I'm looking at the, the goals. I mean, maybe it's a matter of just prioritizing, like, it sounds like the communication and collaboration is probably the most important to get, but you're, you keep talking about needing more information and creating this, you know, getting everyone involved. So maybe it's just a matter of like visually ordering them so that that's like, hey, we're doing this. And then, and then working, admissions is one of the many, you know, things that we're working on. It seems really well thought out, awesome that you all are working together. I think I was interested in the grant and because it's allowing this other, you know, kind of bringing more people together and maybe finding more opportunities. Maybe it's with schools, like finding money on this, like finding opportunities, like you already did, you know, and tying them to some of these goals. So that when we get to implementation, it's not just like, you know, it's that each, each strategy might have like, here's 10 things we could apply for, assuming that that's all going to be coming out hopefully, you know, in the next few years, hopefully more funding for that. So just encouraging that to be like in the lists, like amount of money should be there. So that I think it also helps when talking to communities, having the money up there so that people can help figure out like, oh, okay, if we do this, maybe we can't do, you know, just sort of like, sometimes we leave that out and then people are disappointed because we choose something else and they don't understand why. So I hate to say it, but, you know, just adding the dollar amounts in there.
Yeah, as we think through those implementation roadmaps, it will be important to sort of think about.
Yeah.
How much this costs.
Yeah, but so, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
I'm not going to take up any space right now.
That's good, Rory.
I guess sort of quickly, I, I guess I'm a little curious how, or to what extent data gathering or analysis of existing data factors into this. And we have these vulnerability assessments that, that sort of get into that. But, you know, I think about like the, the dam study that the county's doing and how there's all these private dams and stormwater systems throughout the county that like nobody knows anything about. And like, how many, you know, culverts are there that are, are vulnerable, being washed out? Like that one in Ivy a couple of years ago, and getting like an inventory of those as a method of prioritizing the different strategies that we come up with. Is, or is that part of this process or at a leader step?
Greg, could I actually ask you to just speak briefly to risk factor?
Sure. I'm maybe the one that was talking about the DM study and drainage infrastructure management program. So the risk factor is a company, First Red is what they're called. They produce data that we did purchase recently. So the data includes like flood data, both today's risks and risks in 30 years, based on different climate scenarios. So heat, smoke, other risks like that. So we're, we're, we are looking to receive and consume and digest and disseminate data to some extent. We're relying on the vulnerability assessments that were done, as you mentioned. And, and through different programs that are being administered already from the county and city UVA, like the, the drainage infrastructure programs, I mean, those are obviously more data intensive. So I think, you know, that's my thoughts about, you know, how we're, we're using data. I don't know if you wanted to build on that, Gabe?
Yeah, that's great. Just to say that the, uh, one thing that's helpful about the risk factor data, by the way, the package that we got from them has city and county. Sometimes you get data sets and there's like, you know, the county's vulnerability assessment has a donut hole in the center. So for this project, we, we were able to get both. And the, a lot of the data in that data set is much more spatially refined than some of the maps that you might see in the county's vulnerability assessment, for example. So we're hoping to use that more refined, updated data for, for the strategy development.
And Rory, I can also share, so the city has a flood resilience plan that has been adopted by or approved by DCR. So that has a list of projects in it that we can apply for funding through the CFPF fund to, you know, actually do these, get funds to do some projects that have been identified through that. And so we imagine this, that plan will relate to this one. That would be part of the implementation roadmap, right? Like take our plan that's been approved, apply for funding to do the progress. So on the city side, that is in place for flooding specific.
Cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Lani.
Yes, yes, it strikes me that there's this sort of overlap between addressing climate change and one of the world's other great crises, this occurring, which is the policy and extinction. You know, we're, we're massively losing biodiversity in worldwide places. And I know Alamo County has a biodiversity action plan. You know, we, I think we stand apart by, by having that in our county. You know, to what degree are we, but, well, first I'll say there are some look how these have gotten. They're addressing, they're addressing of climate change horribly wrong. You look at Chesterfield, for example, who, who drew a massive solar project that actually is going to wipe out several endangered species in Virginia. So that's how you get addressing climate change wrong. So, so what we're doing in Alamo County, you know, working with, maybe in Charlottesville for that matter, to, to make sure that we're not just addressing climate change, but also looking at the biodiversity aspect as well.
Great question. Couple, a couple brief thoughts. And I know wanting to make sure there's time for everybody. So one, there's, one of the things that we talked about in our strategy development is at some point we'll need to prioritize those strategies, right? And so one of the ways that we want to do that is by bringing in other factors to think about, you know, what kind of multiple benefits at once is a strategy able to give us? So there was that slide that Emily showed that talked about kind of climate change as, you know, an incredible challenge and also a symptom of, of sort of deeper challenges, including, you know, extraction and exploitation of environment that I think touches on biodiversity and species extinction. And so one of the things that we talked about is having that kind of root causes mindset as we evaluate strategies that can be beneficial, that we want to, you know, prioritize for this work, is to actually, you know, kind of maybe score or maybe check off, notate somehow, like what strategies are things that, you know, are really going to be helpful cutting across those multiple challenges that we're facing? And then what are strategies that maybe, you know, because it's a climate resilience plan, to, to Mr. Moore's point earlier, you know, we may need to include some strategies that have to do with like backup generators, for example, for critical facilities that aren't able to accommodate, you know, rooftop solar. But of course, that's something that's only solving one problem and in some ways contributing to the others. So less of a, less of one that, that brings the multiple benefits at once. So that's one element. And a second element is I think I've had the opportunity to work on recent projects with colleagues in community development on some of the county's current policymaking that, that really try to thread that in, in ways that maybe other communities haven't, you know, been able to quite as well. So, you know, thinking about how we can make sure to prioritize biodiversity protection and even increase as we also, you know, promote clean energy in, in the county. It's ongoing, ongoing work, but I think those are a couple of the ways that we're aiming to do that here. Question?
Philip?
Yeah, so a couple of things. One, very briefly, I, I will let you know that that slide that showed the progress in Charlottesville and said forthcoming zoning ordinance caused six people at the side of this route when you get some very small land taxes. So just people, it's not forthcoming, it has come, it is here, it is working. I didn't, did I not know something? So that's that. I, I, to speak to a slightly larger, and sort of a slightly larger, from a greater height, my interest may be less in the specifics of what we do, but the strategy of how we implement it. Because at the beginning, we talked about, we don't want this just to be another plan. But my concern is, and my thought is that we need to be mindful of, of developing an intimate, an implementation strategy even before we've got the plan fully formed. Or else we're going to find our, if we don't, we're not mindful of the process of the implementation and how this is going to roll out and what it's going to look like. I think we, we could end up in sort of a, a frozen, constipated space where some of this just doesn't get done. So I'm a little concerned about that. And I think that sort of probably deserves some serious thought on how we can look at that. And then to follow up on Mr. Moore's comments, I agree with those gases. Yeah, I mean, it is easy, it is a measurable, that's easy to measure, right? But again, it's obligatory. It doesn't actually change anything about climate or the environment in the, in the city of Charlottesville or Alamo County, because we're not even a drop in the bucket. Yeah, and so, I mean, it's obligatory because we want everybody else to do it, but yeah. Oh, well. That's probably pretty much all I had. But my, my main concern is that we actually are able to implement this and we spend some time and resources on coming up with a strategy, with a capital S strategy. And if we have to pull somebody in to hire some, you know, to hire somebody to sort of talk about strategy, maybe we do that, maybe, I don't know what our, our internal resources are for that. That's fine.
Good point. Emily, Gabe, I just want to give you a chance to respond a little bit to that because I had a similar question. And if I could just kind of riff on that for one second. In addition to how we do it, how do we measure it? So once we're doing it, how do you actually then say? So once we're doing it, how do you actually then say, yeah, we're doing the right thing? Or we need to, you know, kind of change a direction in a couple of places here. Any thoughts on that?
Yes, uh. I mean, I feel like that is certainly something that we have, we are aware of as the project team. And as we work on strategy development, that's a critical piece of it, right? Um, and this is also something that we run into a lot in our mitig, in the mitigation side of our work, right? Like, uh, you know, I can say we are, you know, we just, uh, on the implementation or on the mitigation side. We just gave our first kind of report out on how we're doing on implementing our climate action. And, uh, it is hard to measure each item on our work plan that we have been moving forward discreetly with like. How many, uh, you know, how many tons of carbon did we reduce, you know, by any given action? So that is a difficult part of this work for sure. Uh, and so we, it's something we think about a lot and and will be, um. Thinking about as part of our strategy development. I know that's kind of a, not a great answer, but we're just not quite there yet.
Probably because there's no D letter, D word that measures, but you're like, how do you?
Yeah, so we do give some service to, you know, measurement and verification as and building that into, um. The do phase, right? As we build out those implementation roadmaps, I mean, one of our, uh. One of our guiding principles is these must be actionable strategies that we developed, right? So at this phase in the project, we felt like that was a critically important thing to put forward. This is a guiding principle. We are not going to develop, like if it is not an actionable thing that has real tangible world, real world impacts. It won't end up in the final plan. So that, that's how we're thinking about it from where we stand now.
A second piece that we are planning to do, we, we, the conversation began recently with it. So, you know, I don't have like a document to show for it, but, uh, is, although you actually showed a bit of it on, on one of our slides. Um, is, you know, actually putting out logical frameworks for all the strategies in the plan. And when you talk about metrics, they're in, when you talk about metrics doing action in the real world. There's always going to be that element where you have, you know, the project you do, the outputs, you know, short term outcomes. Uh, medium term outcomes. And then unless you're really lucky, there becomes a dotted line to long term impacts. And so you can conjecture about long term impacts, but often being able to measure definitively the through line. From one all the way to the very end, um, is, is something that, you know, becomes sort of cost prohibitive. Or, uh, or, or, you know, data possession prohibitive. Um, but that piece of building out the logical framework or logic model. So there's a clear understanding of what is the theory of change of this strategy? And how is it going to have the impact that we hope it will, uh, is something that we plan to build out for the strategies in. In our resilience plans. So we're at least, one, forcing ourselves to think through that with our colleagues. And then two, being transparent about those assumptions.
Yeah, I would just add that we're, we're not there yet. I mean, remember, we're go, just going into design. So we have to know what it is that we're going to do before we can figure out how to measure it.
Yeah, yeah. Great, thank you. Just a cognitive time, Cory, not to rush you.
Uh, first, I just want to say thank you, and I hope that this collaboration, uh, to come as more of an annual norm than once every five years. So, so I'm saying that before I forget. Um, I, my first question is, I didn't intend to bring the answer right now, it's something to think about as the process matures. And, uh, what is the cost of doing nothing? And there's, there's signals of that. Uh, I did a control F and on page one seventy of the county plan. Where near I wouldn't read a hundred and seventy pages, right? So I found it there, but that needs to be pulled up to the top. Um, and and maybe it's not always financially, it could be even life expectancy, like if we do nothing. Life expectancy in this region changes from seventy-two to sixty-nine, whatever it might be. But I, I do think that economics and health are two really important points that measures the vitality of a community. So that was my, my first comment. And then, um, just to piggyback a little bit briefly on. What are we going to measure and understanding where we are in the process, understanding is premature. But I do want to push back a little bit on the building performance piece because. I, for my day job, I work for the American Suit of Architects and there's over fifteen hundred firms across the country measuring progress. I get to buy the reports numbers annually about the impact that it's making. I think it'd be negligent for us not to have that be a, a key focus area of the greenhouse gases and and buildings. Um, and then secondly to that, uh, just give thought to how we might communicate our progress to the community. I think that's going to be really important. Um, and I love the fact that Gabe said, um, a theory of change, right? So maybe that's a graphical image that says, if we test this, we expect these outcomes. How's that start to look graphically so we can share it externally and internally? Um, because I think you will need a theory of change. It's such a big problem, right? That there is no one solution. So you have to have bite sized chunks, test this, it didn't work, so we'll recalibrate, we'll do that, right? So those are my two comments for now, and I'll, I'll hold on to rest until we get to the other part of the discussion. Thank you.
Wow. Very grateful to be here. This is exciting. This is important work. Excited to see it. Uh, that this ends my positive things that I say.
Thank you, Lionel, next.
Um, I'm very excited to see equity, uh, as, as a piece here. That was a crucial part of the Charlottesville Plans Together, uh, approach we call it, uh, Equity Lens. Uh, I'd like to hear more about how that will be a part of this. Uh, we, we leaned pretty hard on the Virginia Equity Center as a resource on that. Uh, I don't know if you're doing that, but if you aren't, please do it. They're, they're incredible. Uh, housing was another essential piece of the Charlottesville Plans Together process. I didn't hear it, although I noticed some things about the ten organizations that were listed. Uh, not CRHA. Uh, and I had questions about the emergency housing and how you're thinking about that. Uh, regional transit and transit granted development, I don't see that, but that will be, to my knowledge, essential in, in getting the, the land use in climate. Uh, things we're talking about way outside of the chapter, but it's, it's big. Uh, climate impacts of permitting infill estimates, do we, it's good getting to measures, do we know what will be the effects of doing these changes? I don't. Um, oh, and just, we've been having troubles with legislative authority to police this changing climate. Our rules are old at the state level and we are constricted within them. I, it's going to take us a long time to fix that, uh, but I'd suggest legislative reform. Right, you can respond or not.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, so yes, all of those elements that you mentioned are strategies that are in that draft strategy list. Thinking about density, thinking about transportation, thinking about housing, um, those are all things that came up. Um, uh, we tried to, uh, include some of those words in our report to, to, to. Help signal that those were very important things that came up during all of our engagement that we did during the discover phase. Of course, housing always rises to the top for many folks in this community. Um, I will share, also, we are trying to be active at the state level legislatively through our professional networks. Uh, and Crystal and I, um, and Gabe and Jamie and Greg are members of the Virginia. Group of local government sustainability folks doing this work and we are learning together how to, you know. Think about advocating up, uh, for things that will help us in our jurisdiction. So, and there's several, um, key actions in the climate action plan. That are related to, uh, state and even federal level advocacy and, um. We know that's going to be, continue to be an important piece of, piece of the puzzle and lever to hopefully.
Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you, Emily and Gabe, uh, particularly for bringing this to us early on in the process, right? So, as, as Julia mentioned earlier, you haven't gotten to the design piece yet, so this is great. Uh, and actually, I mean, a lot of great questions already, some of them, or some of them very similar that I had. But you mentioned something, Emily, early on, you said you were recently in North Carolina. And so I was just wondering, were there something that you, and and you did mention a couple of things, particularly how neighbors were helping neighbors, right? I was just wondering more holistically, were there something that you gleaned there or that you have been talking? I'm sure there's conversations going on, right? I mean, this is very fresh, but it's not new, right? We have experience here in, in Nelson County, Skyler. So we have, we have very relevant. Uh, local experience, uh, with very similar type of, of disasters. Just wondering if there's something that maybe caused you to pause and say, well, did we think about that? Did something change or maybe reinforced, uh, some of your thinking? I just thought with this recent experience with Helene, if there's been some retrospect.
Yeah, so, um, well, just for the record, I was in Minnesota with colleagues from North Carolina. I was not in North Carolina. To correct the record, uh, but with colleagues from North Carolina who were sharing their experience, um. Oh, my gosh, it was so interesting. I mean, it's very fresh for, for them, uh, and, um. You know, one of the things that they shared was it was so shocking to be completely cut off from, uh, the internet and communication. Systems and, um, folks had to rely on the radio and not everybody has a radio. Uh, anymore, um, especially one that you can run when you don't have electricity. And, um, so that kind of stuck with me as, um. We like engage with the community about emergency preparedness. I don't think we, you know, there's a huge overlap with this about, I mean, emergency. Fairness. So we've been talking a lot with our emergency preparedness colleagues. Um, they're a really central part of this project and, um. But as we communicate with the community through this lens, you know, what, having lesson or gathering. Uh, lessons learned from communities who have been so greatly impacted recently. That was something that really stuck with me, just how hard it was. So as we develop strategies in our community, it makes me think like, okay. So I come from the engineering world, that's my background before I came to work with city. So, uh, sometimes redundancy. Is considered inefficient, right? But redundancy is a really important word when we're talking about resilience. So how can we help to ensure that some of our systems, including our communications systems are redundant? Um, so we don't end up in the dark, um, not being able to communicate with each other. That was something that really stuck with me. Um, and also, um, yeah, just getting to know your neighbors. I mean, people said they really had to come together. Because we can't plan for everything, right? I mean, what happened in Asheville is not something that any level of planning could have really mitigated, right? And so the stronger those systems are in place and connections between folks, like you showed that graph at the beginning. I think that's really what we're talking about. You experience a shock but are able to come up when you have some strength.
Well, thank you. And I certainly, I mean, this, I've said, is very fresh, right? So there's going to be more and more coming out. I think there's lessons learned.
Yeah.
There that we should draw from. I'm not sure that we learned the lesson from Nelson and Skyler necessarily. We were having a conversation the other day about building and floodplains and, and so, so did we learn the lesson? So here's an opportunity that we have, you know, to learn the entire region, right, to, to learn some lessons, our, our, our.
And it kind of answers Cory's question about what's the cost of doing nothing, right? We, we kind of seen. Awesome. Danny, you guys outnumber us too.
I'm going to hold my questions for the strategy. Thanks.
Uh, Carl?
So I, I am tickled that we were getting to do this. Um, I think Julian and I attempted to do this, uh, just before COVID. Uh, it, it fell apart. So again, glad we're doing it and hopefully we'll do it again. Let me, um, meander through a thought that may lead to a question. I'll be quick. The, everything that I've read and everything that I've heard today speaks to excessive water. And excessive heat, but we don't do a lot of talk about the hostility of water, of droughts. And as I read through the Arlington Report, they acknowledged that not enough work, not enough thought has been done on their part. As late as to, to droughts. And as I read through our reports, where I think we mentioned it three times. The word drought is mentioned three times in our report. You guys in your presentation, the first, your second, third slide, you spoke to. Uh, the worry about droughts and you spoke to wildfires good. I was, um, over at the A school last week, um, just talking about what they're thinking about as late as to, um, as, as late as to resilience. And one of the guys suggested that, um, ninety-nine percent of home properties in Almar. Are at least at moderate risk, uh, for wildfires. And so I just wanted to make sure that we, we give a little more thought to a positive word. So to that end, I think that there may be value, and maybe you've already done it, there may be value in, uh, bringing the, um. The, uh, the water and sewage authority, uh, to the table to talk about this. Because we, we need to understand what their reservoir strategies are going to be, uh, in, 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 in light of, in a good drought. Uh, and what their pipelines are going to be and, and that sort of thing. So I would, if we don't want to make them the fourth partner. At least make them a junior partner in the work we're doing and be absolutely certain that we document what their reservoir pages are going to be as we, we move forward.
Absolutely. I meant, just briefly, I know that's most, that was a comment and, and advice for us, if it's okay, just to say briefly. That, uh, Emily talked about how we've been doing this research of strategies from other places around the country and kind of calling out ones that are locally relevant. Uh, and then comparing those with, you know, plans that we have locally, uh, and cross referencing those. And one of the, one of the ones that jumps out with your comment is, um, the, I'm not, you know, I don't have the name of it memorized. But the drought response plan that the Water and Sewer Authority has, uh, we've looked through a number of those strategies. And it's interesting how their plan in particular, some of their strategies are almost written like procedures, you know? If this happens, if water level gets to here, that triggers something that we're going to do about that. And so I think that was really helpful for me to see in looking through what they have in that plan and being able to think about, okay, what is, you know. What do we have here that's already been adopted, that's, that's in place that we can make sure to build on and elevate? And of course, that, you know, doesn't necessarily address folks on well water in rural area. And so, you know, I think to your, just emphasizing to your point, that's definitely, uh, one of the key hazards that, that we are looking at.
And I just wanted to mention that for those who are not aware of this, RWSA is in a process right now that we're very involved with, that UVA. Which is that they're going to be, they're, they're maxing out the dam, the reservoir. They're recirculating the way that water systems are going to work for our entire community. And they're, they're building out their raw water lines. So instead of eighteen inch raw water lines, they're going to have thirty-six inch raw water lines. So the whole system is going to work differently. And the whole point of what they're doing is, uh, building up. The water infrastructure for our community.
Yeah, I was glad that the Red Bank Water and Sewer Authority also hired their first sustainability coordinator ever. And that we're going to be, uh, meeting with that person next week. And, uh, I think that'll create a direct link to their sustainability programs.
Sure. What we're talking about, really what we're talking about, what, what's the response in case of the emergency? And so that's more than just water. That's, that's the fire department, that's the, you know, um, that's the, uh, I don't know what we have now, whether or not it's. A unified, uh, ambulance service here, or you, at the most, uh, you know, also what we're talking about is how those, how those entities communicate each other. So it's not just how they communicate with us.
Yeah.
But how do they communicate with themselves so that they in fact can respond in the ways that you're saying, that you're suggesting that we're, we're anticipating?
Yeah, I would imagine that, I mean, I think in my mind is simplifying this into like a checklist of these are the things, like it's power, it's water, it's sewer. It's all these other, you know, pieces and how then will you respond in a, in a situation for each one of those? I just had a couple of really quick, quick questions. One is, you know, we talked about measurable and I totally get that, that that's a ways off. Because we don't know yet what we're deciding, designing and doing. Um, I would just encourage us to think about measuring even while we're thinking about designing and doing. Because sometimes, I mean, you want to be at the end, you want to have things you can measure. So thinking about that from, you know, backwards to forwards may help you with the designing and the deciding and doing. Um, the other is just thinking about the funding. So we've talked about incentives, we will be talking about incentives probably in a minute. Um, this all is going to cost money. So, you know, we've been thinking about affordable housing for years. And, you know, it took a while to really get to a point where the housing Almar, for example, had some incentive in it. Um, it maybe not enough, but it had some incentive in it. So as we think through this. Let's also be thinking about, and I'm going to ask this as a question, are you thinking about how to fund these things as well? Is that a parallel thing that you're thinking about?
I mean, that's always a question doing this type of work. I mean, I would say up, up to this point. I mean, we've been mostly thinking about it on the mitigation side thus far, but as we move deeper into the pro, into this process, of course. But as we move deeper into the pro- into this process, of course, you know, that is starting to bubble up. And thinking about how can we use this project? I mean, this is a unique thing that we're doing here together, two jurisdictions and our university that spans our universe, our jurisdictions. We're working together. So when you think about grant applications, that's a unique structure, a unique way of working together. So we've been thinking about it in that context, like how can we sort of use this partnership to leverage outside resources? Um we have not, in terms of like, how much will it cost to build resilience hubs in our community? We're not far enough down the road.
That's good to know. I I think sometimes, you know, with with a city council board of supervisors, having those conversations early, to plant the seed into the budget process early is really.
I think it just goes with Commissioner Clayborne's comment about what's the cost of doing nothing. And I think when you frame the whole thing, it it changes the mindset. This is added costs, instead it's you're trying to avoid a total cost down.
I just wanted to think back on something you said, so and actually something that Emily mentioned in terms of, you you wanna define actionable that's great, or whatever, are are your actionable steps that you can take? Along with that, you have to think about what makes them actionable and probably funding is part of it. And so I just wanna reinforce that, that as you're thinking about the actionable next steps, well, I'm gonna enable that action.
All right, I think that's everyone. Back to you guys.
All right, great.
Thank you. Um before we go to the next kind of portion, I did just wanna see Julia, Serena, if if there's uh anything from the last conversation, if something that is on your mind that you wanna um kind of respond to. The aspects of of your work with the project.
Yes, what I'd like to talk about a little bit is uh beyond what people typically think of as community engagement. We're doing a lot of work with subject matter experts in our community. So those are subject matter experts that are staff with the city and the county and with UVA. And we're learning a lot from them because they're experts at what they do. So um and that's also really important when we're talking about the systems and and those people are running the systems in our community. Um I really like uh the idea, um Julian, of going to the schools. Um and I'm thinking about how to do that. Um when I was um working for ZGF in Portland, they had a program citywide where firms sent professionals to schools to teach kids what architecture is and what architecture and planning does. And I was thinking we could do something like that along those lines, make it like a classroom environment, make it engaging. Because I think we have a lot to learn from young people. We've also talked about um uh reaching out to the Monakin Nation, which I think could be a a really fascinating thing to do, but also very useful and obviously important in our community. So um when we think about the five minute walk circle, the ten minute walk circle, I'm thinking about that tonight in terms of the commu- communities that we've already touched. And then those that we need to keep building out the network to touch. Um and so I think that many of you have made great suggestions in that direction.
Uh yeah, actually, I have a meeting with uh tomorrow with uh the county schools to talk about how to actually bring these types of workshops into um the county schools. And I think we could probably use that model with the city schools as well. So um great suggestions and and they're happening. And I think the, like, in terms of the community engagement, we are being really intentional about creating accessible tools that we can deploy across um the region, um using the the cohort as um as kind of a a vetting option so that we can work with them and do like true human centered design. So that we're not just creating things in in our offices and then putting them out into the community. We're actually working with um the community to to think through how we share information, what information we share um in order to enable people to come to the conversation as their best selves. And I think those tools, while we're specifically designing them with the cohort for for their community, those tools will be as accessible to the chamber, to um to classrooms across the community. So that um we'll have the best um availability of information and and design strategies that really reflect the needs of the entire community. And that's really at the heart of it, right? We want it all to be, of course, accessible to you and to the elected officials. Um but at the end of the day, we're gonna need our community to take action and feel vested in this work. So um I think that is like our intention and um the skills that we bring.
Thank you both. Um so gonna close out our portion and just to frame what's next. Um we've, we distilled uh two potential strategies that are kind of a a combination distillation of things that we've researched that we wanted to ask you all, we felt like um, you know, what a golden opportunity to have the two planning commissions together with the kinds of expertise that are in the room uh to hopefully ask for your help thinking through some challenges. So um hoping to kind of shift things here and and we're really asking you all questions and interested in your conversation together and the sort of feedback insight wisdom that you have for us. Um the way that we thought we could do that is by picking a couple of potential strategies that are in the mix of consideration that affect uh likely both, you know, the mitigation side and the adaptation and resilience. And to just kind of put those out for you, I'm gonna share a couple of talking points, just framing why we chose these. And we're basically asking you to help us do a little problem solving and help uh give us insight or ideas on on how we can proceed with with some of these challenges. So I know, hopefully you have it uh in front of you. I'll put them up on the board and sit down and then I can go back and forth. Um but, you know, one of these potential strategies that this should look familiar in some ways. Um we have a strategy like this in in other documents, but it's one that because of its implications for climate resilience, we also are thinking about it very seriously in the context of this work um of elevating that, so protecting areas that provide ecosystem services lands management and ownership strategies such as conservation easements, private open spaces. So this is a distillation of strategies that other localities are pursuing in their resilience plans across the country. And the the framing that we wanted to kind of put out there for you all to help us think through is that, you know, many communities wrestle with a tension between development and conservation and how to go about that. I suspect that the two planning conditions talk about those kinds of things all the time. Um or see that tension in in projects all the time. Um and so we're curious, you know, how we can take the increasingly extreme weather events that we're facing and try to think about a strategy like this, uh you know, sort of reframing it from like these things that are intention and how do we balance that to are there ways that we can actually regenerate and expand ecological health? While also, you know, uh contributing to affordable housing, uh you know, developing in a way that that brings more economic vitality. That's something that I think you all probably have all the time and so we love your help thinking through that ourselves, if we want a strategy like this to be actionable and not just kind of like nice.
Give us an example of an ecosystem service.
Yeah, so I think one great example is is what Mr. Murray brought up earlier of biodiversity, the kind, do you, what would you like to pick back?
Yeah, actually, I would. Um so um great, one great example, um Albert County, you know, Charleston has the Dogwood Festival that everyone everyone knows. Um but we are actually the furthest southeastern occurrence of a very rare dogwood called Cornus canadensis. It's a little dogwood that only gets like yay eye and normally lives in boreal forests up in Canada. Uh but there's a little pocket that survives since last ice age over ten thousand years ago, that's still in Alamo County. Um despite this, this is a plant, if, you know, if we try to grow it, you know, down here at this, this altitude, it would die very quickly from heat. So this can be one of the first casualties from climate change. Um at the same time, despite its sensitivity to like the climate, um it's also a fire dependent species. Um and so it lives in the Shenandoah National Forest. Um right now it's being choked out because they can't do controlled burns. Um so you you think about this, you know, we have houses that are sort of spreading up the hill into the Shannon, you know, to through the foot of Shenandoah, which puts those houses at greater fire risk. Right? But also makes it more difficult for controlled burns. So this is a great example, you know, like for me, if we, you know, we wanted a slogan or like a mascot for climate change in Charlotteville, instead of, you know, Cornus Florida, maybe we should use Cornus canadensis, you know, because that really is this great symbol of, you know, of this potential loss of ecosystem services and biodiversity.
Thanks, thanks for that, Mr. Murray. I think another one that comes to mind for me is is, you know, pollinator uh friendly plants, pollinator species broadly and the impact on our agricultural systems, the, you know, crucial uh contribution. So this is one, and if it's okay, I'm gonna put them both out there for kind of, you know, comment on on both. Um they have perhaps some intersection. The second one that we wanted to um ask you all to help us think through is uh a strategy such as use more compact development and other techniques to increase walkability and accessibility. Uh increasing transportation options during climate hazards, um decreasing transportation cost burden uh and uh and supporting, you know, baseline public health through more active transportation. Um this, our senses that pursuing this strategy appears deceptively simple. Uh it's something that is prioritized in uh both of our localities comprehensive plans. Um you know, in the the city's uh zoning update, likely play a major role in the county zoning modernization process, reflect that kind of priority. Uh it's also something that seems like many people agree is a good thing to pursue. And then very often, the kind of strategies on the ground to pursue that, like uh sort of mixed use, multimodal style development, you know, uh folks are often say, wow, I love that idea. And then a project is proposed next door and it's like, no, no, right, I'm coming out in force against it. And so, you know, how can, how can we overcome some of those challenges associated with that, where maybe folks uh support it in theory and then don't want it when it's when it's nearby, um because of the kinds of beneficial outcomes that I don't need to tell you all about. So those are two we wanna put out there for conversation and.
No, I I I get how this, I'm for the county, I get how this would work for for the area. I get how this would work in Croze, I get how my work in Scottsville. How would something like this work in uh Isma, well, you know, you're.
Which is, and which is interesting. So let me come alongside you. When we were, at one point, we were talking about um community hubs. And my sense of some of the communities, it's not the, not the sort of development, but the areas outside that there was significant pushback on community hubs.
Yeah.
And for, and so I was just trying to figure out, how do we even deal with the fact if if there's an emergency? How do we get those people who can't stay in place to a place of safety? You know, sometimes we say, well, we can go to Yancey School. Well, you gotta get to Yancey School. If if we have, and I won't even talk about what happened just recently, remember, folks, we had a derecho here. If you have any recollection what the what the roads looked like outside in outside of our, uh so the sort of the system, it was a mess. It was an absolute horror show when that derecho came from here. Where do you get people to? Where do you get them to? And so we in our, in our conversations, it was just like, well, no, I don't want one of those, because you put one of those community centers out there, that means there's gonna be a sandwich shop. If there's gonna be a sandwich shop, that means there's gonna be uh this kind of shop. And so the whole idea, I think the question is, say, how do you sort of, how do you sort of speak more broadly? I think it may be helpful if you say, you 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 scare people. And I don't like scaring people, but I do think that in some sense, it's like, what will you do if the next time you're stuck? Remember, we can also remember, we had twenty two inches of snow on the ground, not that long ago. That basically shut us down. It shut us completely down. One of the reasons we're a VDOT place, VDOT only has so many plows that it can de- that it can deploy. And we are accounting like four hundred and sixty seven thousand acres. I'm not trying to be a doomster, but I'm just trying to say, I think, I think it may be wiser to look at what are those, what are those areas that have access to things sooner? And then try and work out from them and then build infrastructure, build resilience away from them.
I I'd like to back up to your, I don't like scaring people. Uh I don't, I don't either.
Yeah.
Um but and we um decided that we had an alarming amount of experience in this in twenty uh twenty two, twenty twenty three. Change is scary. And I think one, and none of this is gonna work unless we've got a significant portion of people enthusiastically on board. You know, for all of this to to have, I mean, the the community at large needs to have some sort of consensus that this is an important thing to do because change is scary and we're gonna change things. And it's gonna cost money. Uh and it's really, really difficult, uh I think, to frame the appropriate fear in people's lizard brains for things that are gonna happen twenty years from now if we do nothing. We just don't seem to be good at that. You know, getting pissed off because we're building a ten story building next door, yeah, that's easy. But uh it's right there. But to have this sort of nebulous, and then we've got this insidious group of of mouth breathers who are in a position to say, oh, none of this is actually happening. And that's getting, that's actually getting credence, right, where it's a, it's complete crackpot and shouldn't get any at all. But there are actually people running around who think that this is some sort, you know, you know, thank God for the billionaires and oil company executives who, you know, or else for for, you know, for uncovering this dastardly plot, otherwise the scientists would have gotten away with it. I mean, you know, I mean, it's, and I think that those are sort of larger communication strategies that we have to have, and I don't have a solution. But either one of these, we gotta say, twenty years from now, this is gonna happen if we do nothing, as you said. Well, maybe we need to define that pretty clearly and show how things were twenty years ago, and here's the change you can see. Uh yeah, but I I think that in implementation, if we don't get people aware that this is real and serious and it doesn't cost money, and your life is actually going to change because of it and on a larger scale than, hey, you've got a recycling bin now. We're, we're, we're not gonna move it, oh, all right.
Just one thing, if I could just add to to that conversation, and and it is Halloween, most of the scaring part's okay, but uh thinking through the opposite side of sort of scaring is education, in a sense, right? So ways to answer, I think, both of these strategies, one way, and I know you're doing this, but is is actually getting out there and saying, these are the benefits of open space, these are the benefits of stormwater management, this is the benefit of walkability. This is et cetera, et cetera. Um so I mean, I think that's just a, I, once you instill that value in in the residents, then oftentimes it is less scary for change because they see the benefit of it from the start. Um the other thing that just sort of strikes me in general about these two strategies is, you know, we've talked a lot recently as we're looking at AC forty four, that ninety five percent of the counties in the rural areas. And, you know, these are two questions, two strategies, very skillfully chosen, I'm sure. In that, one of them talks about open space, the other one talks about density. So, you know, our development area, we've decided, we collectively decided not to expand it. So we're looking at density. How do we create density within the development areas? Um so I'll just call that out as an observation and think through this.
Yeah, so um also bring it, bring it back there to, you know, some of the strategies. I mean, I think um you know, I think, you know, even thinking in an urban context, and we've had a we had some conversation before about the challenges of even getting green space um in our rural areas.
Yeah.
Because, you know, to get a piece of green space means that you often have to develop part of it so some, something can be offered back as a green space. So, so those are, those are, those are real concerns. I think some of the way that I think about it too is that, you know, we often, I think one, one of the reasons that the public often mistrusts a lot of these conversations is because they hear the word density. And they think um it's gonna be all concrete. Um it's gonna be all housing, no green space, a loss of service, worse traffic, worse schools. So I think the if the, the infrastructure piece is very important, but I also think in a very narrow way, footprint is always, is also important. Um and I'm kind of surprised that we we haven't really looked at some of the particularly sensitive areas, repairing areas. And and instead of thinking in terms of the number of units in those areas, think about limiting the footprint. Saying the footprint can only be so many square feet in those areas. And I think that would do a whole lot to really um change the the conversation about some of these things. Um we also have authority um to to uh require LID in some of these areas. Um and I'm surprised that we're not using that. So I think that that's um and then these areas, you know, are areas that, you know, are often used for pedestrian infrastructure, they're used for walking, cycling, and that provides you that sort of thing. Um you know, conservation easements. You know, conservation easements don't have to just be for rural areas. We think about them for rural areas. But, you know, a lot of, you know, the, some of the conservation district, a lot of the easements they hold are riparian easements. And so, that's another strategy that we could be doing and thinking about, you know, protecting these areas long-term.
Yeah, with just one example, we, we just finished a rezoning, which many of you know about North Fork. And up there, we proffered 200 acres of open space. It's in the development area. It's got 3.7 million square feet of entitled development. But we also, out of 565 acres, carved out 200 as permanent open space. And to be quite honest with you, that's mostly floodplain and criticals. So where developers can be looking at that and thinking about it, it's not just, oh, okay, this is convenient. Sure, we'll put that proffer out there because it makes us look good. But then how do you actually program that space? And including that in the conversation is important.
Maybe we, we might have to go into places up for it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I'm, I'm perfectly fine with, I think most people would be fine in saying like, okay, let's have taller buildings, if it means preserving more green space. But often when we have the conversation taller buildings, it does, it just means taller buildings everywhere, as opposed to taller buildings to projects.
So Rory, and then I'll go.
So I guess with regard to strategy two, you know, I, I, I think it's easy to look at that and say, you know, we should, you should allow more density. And I think there's, there's that middle part there that I think is maybe easier to overlook there. But, but it's sort of a critical component of it, is that you, you, you've almost in some senses done a good job of, sometimes, of having your new greenfield developments be relatively dense and even have good connectivity and walkability within the development. But because they're greenfield developments, and they're happening as, by and large, in that kind of second ring of suburbs, around your first ring suburbs that were developed, you know, 40 years ago, and are not walkable. They, they end up not being walkable to things, or accessible to, you know, the urban center. And so, you, you end up with this density without accessibility, which is not necessarily bad, at least it's not sprawl without accessibility. But it's not quite as good as density with accessibility. And thinking about how to remake those connections up and through those older suburbs into the urban core and into other activity centers, I think it's something that could use some extra thought.
To zoom out a little bit, the two potential strategies, so I read through them. I, I got through the packet and the guiding principles. I'm like, okay, these are mostly very good. The long-term goals, I'm like, yeah, right. And I get to the two strategies. I was like, these are not the strategies that helps us get to those goals. These are just status quo strategies essentially. One is keep preserving people's private land in rural areas. The others keep building somewhat dense units in the growth areas. Those are already happening, and I don't really see how those solve our problem. I don't think we're gonna land use our way to real resilience. I think we have to look at what are people's needs in the face of climate crises and other kinds of crises. And those needs are gonna be food, water, electricity, safe quality homes, communications and connections. And neither of these touch any of those directly, which is where I think we ought to be putting our energy. If we talk about the first potential strategy, more conservation easements and private open spaces. I mean, I think there we can look at the rural areas and say, what do we grow? Who makes a living in agriculture? How do we do business? You know, whether, or their profit sharing and co-op models to get people into those, those fields? So that there's food nearby when we need it when there's crises, right, as things change? In the sort of urban, you know, development area, yeah, keep building more dense housing. And also, I think we have to say, how do we very explicitly build more housing, including social housing and other models of housing, so that people who work for living can afford to live there? And, and, and that's part of resiliency as our community. There's missing things here that I didn't even see. Like, like, for me, if I were thinking like, all right, what's gonna help us be resilient? It's gonna be more robust electric and water backup systems. It's gonna be a radio in every home. It's gonna be more robust communication systems. It's gonna be third places to build those social networks, y'all were talking about earlier. So you do get to know your neighbors and people, you know, down the street. And, and those, I, I, I would encourage us with our strategies to be more bold in what feels like a, a little riff around the edges of our status quo.
Just 10 seconds on that.
Yeah.
Charlottesville is got the densest zoning ordinance it can have. We just spent the last couple of years logging it to get more dense.
I'm aware.
And getting pushed back in some, by some members of the community for the same reasons I alluded to earlier. Look at the longer term picture. So to thus, to, to strategy number two is a non-starter for the city of Charlottesville, because we've already done it. And it's gonna be years before we're gonna revisit that to try to make it still denser. So strategy two is easy enough. It's like, okay, well, done what we can do, now we have to think about how to support that density in a smart way and how to use it in a smart way, which gets back to Julian's comment about bringing in the private sector. Because developers, you know, that's, that's a conversation with the developers about what gets built.
And I would offer, I mean, we, we talk about density, but we don't have a trans, we don't have a public transportation network. And I will gently suggest, I don't believe we're ever gonna have a public transportation network. And, and one of the reasons I say that is the way our two communities are built, I don't know how I can move public transit across those communities in a way to make the dollars work. So if we took, and I always get this messed up, Brookfield, Brookville. Yeah, I wanna call it something else, since someone says put the right name in there. Where there's going, that whole quarter. So if I come from John Warren Parkway, up 29, come over to Burke Mar Extended, come back to Rye Road, this is supposed to, I don't have a way to get people there. I got a lot of new houses up there. I got a lot of new families going up there. And then when, what comes in, 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 in the North Fork, in North Point, I don't have any options right now for those, except for micro cap, I guess, to some degree. But I don't have options for people to not get out of their cars.
Yep.
And so you gotta help me with, not you, but we've been helping. I'm sorry, Betsy.
I just thought, at the start, and I didn't know if these were just things to, like, start a conversation. They do seem pretty, like, we already agree on all that with them. But what I'm noticing, because we're both in the room with the city and the county, I think just the, creating the larger strategies in the county saying, like, we can work on this stuff. The city saying, we can work on this stuff, connecting them, hopefully, as, you know, as best we can. So maybe that's where, like, in this whole list of things, it could be like, how does the county put a fund, you know, to do this? How does the city do this? Instead of saying, like, you know, we have, the city has their pros and cons. You know, there's, there are things to work out in the county. Is there things? And they're not the same. So how do those two, like, support each other? So that these two, instead of me like two strategies, say, like, how do these support each other? Who's doing what, where? Like, we're already, you guys are starting to do.
It's gonna help with like a super pragmatic, critical slope wave. There's a reasonable argument to be made that inside the city of Charlottesville, we should, we should just be like, done, we're not doing that anymore. And increasing the density.
Not doing it, meaning that you're not controlling the slopes?
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna, that we're gonna move away from that, as, as, as a general, as a, and the idea being that we could get more density out of that. And in return for that, more people living here and more green space outside of the dense area. Now, I'm not saying that's a bad idea or a good idea. But what I'm saying is that we would need some coordination in policy and in rulemaking that complement each other. So that if we did that, there would be something else going on in the county to sort of complement that.
But even before you get to the county, let's go back to what they just told us. The steep slopes were established because they were trying to provide, provide some protection for earth.
Right.
So if we take them out and we allow people to build on them, that means we've got, we've got to have an integration to the stormwater management people, somehow or another. That means we've also got to figure out a way, what happens? Not that all, developers are all good people and good-hearted people, and sometimes buildings move.
Yeah.
And they particularly move.
Well, that's already, I don't wanna get into an argument there.
But I'm just saying, I'm just saying how we do that.
Yeah.
I mean, we, because I think we're moving towards a going to gross density. We're no longer gonna do that to density, which in fact then says to the developer, you're all smart people, you'll have really good people on your staff, figure out how to put it there. But here are the things that you can't mess with. You have to have these kinds of setbacks and things.
I think what Phil's trying to get at is like, sort of the critical slopes thing aside, like, what we should be focusing on to enact that second point is, is building as much as close to, you know, UVA and downtown, the employment centers as we can. And part of that is building a lot more in the city, which I think we've, we've made a good first step to get towards. And there's probably more work to be done that will have to take a couple of years. But you guys right now are, are on your comprehensive land. I might throw out there that, I, I think in your, your method of land use planning, of, of having individual area plans, or whatever you're calling them now, for each different place, you end up losing a bit of coherence there, where, for example, you have a ton of pending growth in Holly Need. Because when the place 29 plan was made, I assume there was lots of greenfield space. It was, you know, way up 29, and that was in the designated growth area. So of course you put a lot of growth up there. And you end up with developments like North Fork and Brook Hill that are reasonably dense internally, but no connection and, and almost impossible to make, to retrofit with the connection. And then you have your properties, like.
He meant North Point. He meant North Point.
North Point, sorry.
I'm helping you out there.
You're right at the airport, and I think a lot of it is out there. But then, then you probably is like, you know, the Wetzel property, the Granger property, that would have been, that are right there already basically connected and would have been honestly better suited for that sort of much more intense growth. But those were made in different master plans that had different objectives.
Yeah, that's not like.
But it also needs, I mean, we talked about the, the NIMBYs and that, but we had a really great plan for the Wetzel property. We had a fantastic plan. Well, the people across the street just basically stormed the ramparts and called. Some of us weren't, some people weren't here. But those of us who were on the board, they basically called us everything but, you know, what was called on Sunday night. And so, so I, you know.
And that was even after the developer already pushed it down.
So I think the conversation is, you're talking about how do we have community, community conversations with folks? To say that if you want to be, remember, we all came here from someplace else, unless you have a piece of land that was here from the 1700s, and some people do, but a lot of people don't. You know, they don't, they don't. And so, how do you have that conversation in this eclectic group? And I will tell you, I live in a place right now where the, the, the census has changed from old Charles, old Almaral to new Almaral, and they don't want to know their neighbors. They could give a flip about their neighbor, but yet they expect the services to be like it was in Buchanan, Connecticut. It's like, that ain't happening, brother. You live in the wrong world if you think they're gonna come and deal with that. So you've got this, we've got this interesting change that's happened here. Where instead of becoming more community focused, like my colleague to the right wants us to do, I'm sensing that there's this, there's this, there's this sort of pulling apart. And how do we do it in a way that allows us to be a place that's safe, that's resilient, and that can think into the future of what, of what the things that are gonna, gonna happen to us? And that's the thing I'm really sort of struggling with.
Can I just, I'm sorry, just one quick timeout order for, what is it? What order? Thank you. For those of you who are waiting for me to systematically go around, I'm not doing that. So Commissioner Claiborne asked very kindly, are we gonna go around to each person? So if you have something to say, just feel free to jump in. The second thing I'll just mention while I'm talking is, to kind of bounce off these things as we think about it, tie it maybe back to some of your potential strategies is, is, is two things. One is, I think your question was about how did we, how, how can our community overcome the challenges associated with achieving these aims in practice so that we can realize the beneficial outcomes? So that's one thing for us to think about, how can our community overcome that? The second thing is, we've talked a lot about density and bringing density to certain areas. We haven't talked a lot about how do we think about infrastructure? Though we have mentioned infrastructure, but if you've got this density and we all want, because people are coming, right? People are showing up. How do we handle that in a way that's thoughtful and forward-thinking in terms of resilience? I think we have to measure where we are with our infrastructure. How stable is it? Where do we want it to get to? And how do we implement that as part of our development process and increasing density?
I just wanted to make a quick point. I haven't made any points yet, so. I just, just for the, you know, so I have benefit of actually been on your side of the table, because I was on the planning commission. I didn't even chair it in Charlottesville. So I did eight years there, and I'm doing eight years here, and then I'm done. Honestly, too much. But, but, you know, if you listen to our, if you're really bored and you have nothing to do on a Tuesday night, you wanna listen to us, you'll hear this commission talks a lot about wanting more density. And this commission also talks about the fact that we're not necessarily supporting, expanding the growth area, because we think that that'll just like, it's like going on a diet by loosening your belt, you know? So we want to push the density into what we do have. Now, having said that, like Julian said, you know, we got like the stormtroopers coming out and saying, how dare you ruin our community with this, whatever the density is? Density is a dirty word to a lot of people. I, you know, when, when I lived in Belmont and we got the Belmont Lots in, one of the things we did was show people pictures of beautiful density to get people to say, oh, that wouldn't be so bad if that lot was developed more densely than a couple of single-family houses, which was what the original idea was. So I'm just saying that we're all on that, that side. And in fact, you know, we've been saying like, could you please go a couple stories higher? Like, we were coming, getting, we're like, please, go higher. And, you know, we get things like, well, I don't wanna put an elevator in, or I wanna make it stick-built, and then I can't. It's like, you know, whatever. So, you know, we're on that side. But I think it, bringing it back to the resiliency part, you know, one of the things we talked about in our very last planning commission was, you know, how can we, if we want, we're not getting the density that we're putting in our comp plan. You know, we're, people are coming in at less than that. Some of the complaints we hear is, well, your process is so hard, and it takes time, and it costs too much money, and I don't wanna bother with it. So just come in with buy rights stuff. So, you know, we were talking about, what can we do to incentivize that? So putting that resiliency lens on it, you know, is there something green that they do that they then get that sort of automatic bump up? You know, we've done this for affordable housing. But, you know, like, if you put a green rooftop in your development, if you add extras water quality treatment for your stormwater, if you make that trail connection, like making those kind of automated things that, yeah, you can slide on through the, the, the development process if you're doing the green things that we want. We don't really have incentives right now. We, we, we really don't. If I'm a developer, why am I gonna go that extra mile and do that green thing?
I, I think that, based on you and infrastructure, which is you've gotta come up with a way to induce, seduce, or otherwise encourage, you know, that building in those areas that you've designated for higher density. You know, Charlotte's got that a little easier than you, because we got 10, four square miles, and that's it. You gotta do what you gotta do. So. Yeah, but, but things like, you know, is it worth it to build in closer in these growth areas? What do I get? And infrastructure has something to say about that.
And I think that's gonna require some investment. Now, we're the commissioners. We're not the board. We're not the council. We haven't got that much experience.
And, and we're not, and we're not the legislature.
Right. So the, the thing is that, you know, we're going, you know, we sometimes, we talk like we're on the board. But, point is that, you know, we are going to, as a county, city, have to put money in, more money in the game.
Yeah.
We're going to have to actually build, you know, we can't just say, please give us a sidewalk. Please give us a track. Please give us, we're gonna have to actually start coughing up some of that money, subsidizing some of these things to make this community, the green community that we want, that's gonna be more infiltrative, withstand extreme weather, be more drought tolerant, be more water conservation-based. That's just gonna cost money. I'm willing to pony up, but that's just me. Not everyone likes that.
And I will suggest you should, you should, everybody should be aware that our center of business is actually not where you think it is. It's where he is. There are more jobs outside UVA. No, 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 it's a research park and across. No, 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 no. It's the research park and across the street from the research park. There are more jobs out there right now and that's slated for growth. And what did you say? They're not connected to, they're not even connected to Holly Meat Center. I can't even walk to Holly Meat. I can't, no, I can't walk.
Not yet, because there's one like nine tenths of a mile that needs to be finished, which will be done in twenty twenty seven.
Okay, I'll be able to walk there.
Bring it all back to conservation easements and open spaces. Uh, Commissioner Murray made a really good point earlier that like, we, you get these proffered open spaces in developments, um, and then, you, they often are the perfect place to use to for connectivity, but it's infeasible because they are private open spaces, right? You guys are going through this now with the, the, uh, Greenway Trail Biscuit Run Connector Greenway. Um, where, you know, these are private HOA easements and you haven't, didn't get the connectivity, part of the proffer before. Um, and that's, I think what really kills me about this strategy is like, when they are conservation easements and open spaces, that doesn't even necessarily mean they're providing the ecosystem, services you're asking for. I mean,
Yeah, I mean.
I think most of your conservation easements are probably on properties that are, are doing the opposite of ecosystem service.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's an excellent point. I think there's a lot of localities that require when green space is dedicated, that it's, that at least the easement is granted to the locality for that. And I, I would love to see us move in that, that direction. Um, I think that also provides security for a lot of people because, you know, developments that, you know, you have this area that's, that's been green for a long time and then the developer comes back somewhere, somewhere years later and says, actually, we're gonna put houses there. And they said, well, we were all promised that that was green space. Well, either it is or it's not. And it's good to have that sense of security that, you know, this is what it's going to be. So I definitely agree with that. Um, it's also worth noting that all easements are not made the same. Um, the, the kind of easements that my colleague was talking about, open space easements are not the same as, as conservation easements. And so the problem is, is in Emerald County, and also there's different models of easements as well. There's, you know, the, the people with the big money, the big landowners, what they do is they donate their easement, they get a tax rate with it. Um, but ordinary people who don't have a lot of money, um, they depend upon a different kind of easement. Um, where they, where the, the rights are purchased. And Emerald did have a program like that called ACE. Um, and then that was limited. Um. Yeah, exactly. So the easement program that we do have, um, is unfortunately not the kind that benefits smaller landowners and people with less, less financial resources. So, um, and then, you know, as you score things like easements, um, we can, we can choose. We, we've done, in my opinion, a poor job in the past of, of doing things like, looking at, uh, are we really getting the maximum value for these easements? Is this just a big area that's just cut for hay? I don't wanna pay, I don't, I don't want us to pay for any easement for that.
Again, but that's not, that's not the purview of this group.
Well, it's, it's not, but we can make those recommendations.
It's, it's the purview of, as I say, if that's what you really wanna do, go over it.
But we can make those recommendations.
We at least need to be clear that it's not gonna help with climate resiliency, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I think, I, I think.
It may help with fire, but it won't help with climate. It may help with fire.
May I interrupt for just a moment?
Yeah.
I know I saw a couple of hands and I wanna hear from folks who haven't spoken, but I also wanted to just call out that, uh, Commissioner Firehawk ma- made, talked about a number of items that Serena put on the back whiteboard, as potential follow-up questions for some of what you all have already shared with us. Um, so you, you've started to, you know, you pointed out, okay, these are a little broad. And you started to give us some almost more like precise strategic pathways to pursue. And Serena, could you say something about just like maybe the, what would be helpful with asking folks to contribute? In response to those questions as you, as new folks chime in and you keep talking?
Yeah, so in the, in the design phase, we're going to serve up some of these great strategies that, um, have been considered by other localities. Much like the two that you're looking at today. And in the conversation, I've just been, um, capturing some of the questions that you all are asking about how effective would these strategies be? Um, so when we start to consider, I think in the design phase, you're not only thinking about the possible ideas, but how they'll work. And if we have enabling authority, what are the funding possibilities? How are we gonna measure it? That's a design consideration, right? And what are the benefits? And then somebody said, how are we gonna communicate, um, or get the community behind it? So these are all considerations that I would wanna put forward as we outlay the strategies. So that not only you all can think about it, but the community, when we do these design workshops, they can be thinking about it. So that in the end, we have this framework for each of the, the strategies and it all makes sense. And we don't have to think about it after the fact because it's been considered at the table. And so my question, a question is, um, what else in addition to these, um, considerations that I've heard tonight? Should we be putting on the table as like in a worksheet or in the conversation when we do, um, workshops with staff, with community, with you all again, et cetera?
I, and I would just add that, um, if, if it's not clear, the difference of, of between strategy one and two is, um, alluding to the fact, that the solutions in the county are gonna be different from the solutions in the city. So we have to figure out how to make those harmonious also, right? But it's not as if you're gonna have one plan, that's gonna apply to the, the very different conditions in the, in the city versus the county. That's gonna solve everything. They're gonna have to work together.
Julia, can I follow up to that? So, you know, as you transition in the design phase, you know, I think finding challenge and friction about change or what people sort of personal understand is, or, or it could be an encumbrance as you try to move forward. I, I wonder if there's a process actually more of a clean slate start. And that you don't actually look at all of the friction points, but instead you just work almost just from scratch. And so you actually identify a series of four lenses of what does resilient community look like? And this one lens could be an urban community. These are the things you need for resilient urban community. And then you do, here's a suburban lens that shows, this is some different variations, you know, and talk about something going, and then move it to a rural and then move it to a natural. And sort of have this sort of series of sort of ideal outcomes that people can start to be literate around. You can take it to the schools, you could show this to kids as they're going up being like, hey, what does it mean to be, uh, resilient in the suburban environment? Because I think you don't wanna sit there and make people feel bad about the condition they live in and somehow they're contributing to something.
And remember, one of the last slides showed all of the different reference material that we're looking at, and all of the other communities that we're looking at of different sizes. And so I think we're moving in that direction, but I just wanted to make that point. A lot of people don't realize that, uh, UVA is two thirds county and one third city, so it's primarily county.
Yeah, maybe there's an institutional lens or something, or a corporate campus lens or something that's one of these guiding things. And I think then people can sit there, and start to assess, you know, okay, so the Charlottesville compl, you know, where are the areas we need to do more, or if you're looking at a new development.
See, Michael, I would argue that there are parts of Charlottesville that actually look more suburban. They look more rural. I would say they look actually more rural, not just suburban.
And that's why I said lenses, is that the idea is that you can, they don't, there's not county guidelines and city guidelines.
Serena, so you just asked a question. What, what else is, is there, do you engage community? And so I do think, it's engaging the development community, right, as part of it. So I would say as, as much as we've heard, well, there's, you're from the community every time we're gonna build something or, but I don't think that that's actually what's limiting us, at least in the county. You know, a lot of the, of, of the developments that have come forward, we're actually, as, as. We can, and so it's the development community. That's the limiting factor, you know, the density in the county. So how do we enable that higher density? How do we enable, you know, uh, adaptive reuse and infill projects in, in the county? I think the city has had more success with that, but we haven't. And they're just not building to that density for all the reasons that we hear, right? Different building materials, fire, you know, fire code, if you have high rides and more elevators, e- e- everything else is more money, right? What it comes down to. So having a conversation with them, what would it take? To increase the density? I think that's, that's one group that I would, ask that you guys engage with.
And I love, I think that the, the generative nature of what does it take? Or what does a, a resilient community look like? That opens up the conversation to developers to say, oh, I think I could contribute in this way to this vision of what it means to be resilient. So in addition to the density and like how we get there, there's, I'm sure like there's more strategies than we could even think of, um, that we could leverage the creativity of the development community, um, and other people in our area that can.
I think when you do many workshops, you could do a similar framework. You could, you could start to identify what, what does resilience look like for those different constituent groups? And then it doesn't hit one against the other. Instead, they may just be different, slightly different themes.
Yeah, I think truly like to your point, you know, a picture does paint a thousand words. If you can show an example of something, it's really helpful. The other thing on the flip side is, I wonder if there'd be a developer or developers, that might think about partnering and maybe it's residential developers. Seems like it's more likely to be that. That could come together and create a pilot project. And, you know, maybe there's some incentive there. Maybe there's a market incentive to them for marketing their homes or whatever it is that we are a pilot project. We are concerned about resilience. We're teaming together and this is how we're doing it. And that becomes case study. And also allows developers to work creatively to find ways to make things happen more efficiently. The other thing I'd say with development community, and we talked about incentives, it's easy to think, and you all know this, preacher of the choir, but you know, you, we think about incentives as, oh, we have to find the money for this. Right? It's not always that in the development community. A lot of times it's time. And so if there are ways that we can think about and ask the development community, okay, what is it that would make things more feasible for you in terms of bringing density, in terms of achieving these resilient, uh, goals and objectives? How do we get there? Um, other than paying you? You know, I know they're gonna say, well, tap fees, gosh, RWSA, things like that. So expensive. Yeah, yeah. Too soon. But yeah, and then I had one other point, but you threw me off, so. One question, point of order. Thank you for that. How long do we wanna go? He's probably could talk for about seven hours. Are we thinking maybe wrapping things up around eight, eight fifteen? Sound about right? Was thinking, yes?
I think, yeah, definitely.
Okay, well, do we want, do we wanna guess?
I just, I had a comment that I wanna throw out before we, um, before we end, but, um, so I know Rory kind of touched on connectivity and we have these different parts of the county and city being developed, but you can't get between them, without driving. And something that hasn't come up yet is VDOT and kind of our regional transportation, uh, planning and implementation process that is a more or less, what, you know, oil machine, it kind of goes on. The MPO puts together projects from the jurisdictions, federal money comes in and these projects get built eventually, or something like this.
It's a machine at least.
Yeah, it's a machine. I don't know how well it is, but things are being built. And, um, and, but the scale of what VDOT is doing in the region is much larger than anything the city and county are doing. Like I was looking, the last city, uh, capital improvement budget has twenty seven million over five years for all transportation investments. And I think about sixteen million of them, I would classify as benefiting, you know, like walking and cycling in the city. And, you know, sixteen million dollars, VDOT spent fourteen million dollars on one intersection, that has no pedestrian, you know, benefit whatsoever. So, and I think they're spending like over a hundred million dollars in projects, most of which do not move us closer to being a walkable, bikeable community. So I guess my, my question is like, so that we're not fiddling around the edges here, uh, and kind of playing in our little sandbox, like, how, how do you plan to engage with VDOT and, and, you know, an agency that spends lots of money and doesn't seem particularly interested in fostering dense walkable communities?
I mean, you, you should speak to that, because that's actually, there's a tail that wags that dog and it's not VDOT.
Yeah, I mean, VDOT is implementing projects that are proposed by the county and the city and the MP, well, not the city, but, the city implements its own projects or, or accurately doesn't implement them. It's canceled thirty five million dollars worth of projects, but, uh, we, but, but you know, the county sets its own transportation priorities beyond VDOT, um, or the, beyond smart scale, uh, for directing VDOT what to do. So I think, you, we do sort of have the right people in the room, except to the extent that, you know, nothing any of the planning commissions do matter. It's the board and council that matter, but. I mean, they listen to us.
And, and many of these projects are smart scale funded, so I, you know, there's a formula that decides, and that formula is very political, but, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, I just think that there are, you mentioned state level agencies, but I think, the kind of regional transportation project implementation process, I really hope that we can find a way to direct it towards making the region more resilient, and making it more possible for us to live, you know, in more resilient ways.
Part of that is that VDOT listens to data. And so every time this project come out, you know, in the county, people are saying, oh, the traffic count is this. And that always just means the traffic count of cars. And so you have traffic counts for pedestrians, cyclists, runners, uh, but we don't use it. And, and I think we need to start implementing that and making sure that when projects come forward, we say, well, pedestrians aren't using this area. You know, I, I think that needs to be a part of the conversation.
And I think, I think when you talk about project origination, um, and I say it's not a well-oiled machine, like I think that is something that really should have a lot more focus put on it. In particular, putting a resiliency and a climate lens on it. Um, and, and a broader, not just looking at where are the Vtrans needs on the map and oh, there's a lot of this intersection. But, uh, you know, as I'm sure Mr. Barnes would say, uh, looking at that broader region-wide connectivity. Um, and not even where there aren't pedestrians yet, but there should be.
Yeah.
Um, and creating, you know, there's those bridges where people aren't swimming across.
Mr. Claiborne?
I know it's getting late, so let's offer a couple of points. I don't wanna be duplicative, some kind of sort of thing now. Um, for strategy one, I think the first thing that, that came to my mind is, how do we, in, in that lens of climate resilience and so forth? Larger scale renewable energy and the inherent tension that will occur with like land use needs and that needs to be reconciled. And so, um, yeah, who was that?
You have to use somebody's land?
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna wanna put their land in that situation.
But I, I think that is a key to getting us where we need to be though. So that's something we're gonna have to tussle with. And then on the second strategy, around compact development, I wanna make sure that, you know, as we're having these conversations, that, for buildings, we need to incentivize, uh, resiliency, sustainability, carbon reduction, for existing buildings. A lot of what we've been talking about here is greenfield, but you know, the data says, you know, almost half are architecture firm buildings right now in the US, existing buildings. And so, it's inevitable that that's gonna be a new set of constraints that we're gonna have to contend with as we're starting to, flesh out our strategies and start thinking about how that might be implemented. Um, around natural disasters, hazards and, and risk. Um, I jot down four points, uh, preparedness, mitigation, response and recovery. And so how, we start looking at those avenues, what's that start to mean for, you know, infrastructure or site design or, environmental, you know, uh, constraints. Um, so just wanna make sure we also don't lose sight of, of that piece. As we get further down the road. And then lastly, um, I jot down business continuity for both public and private sectors. So, you know, we had some rain from Helene, school was closed for three days. That's crippling for a lot of families, right? Um, so in terms of business continuity, how do we stay up and running? As we think about site design, building design, planning, zoning, and what that starts to mean, right? When we talk about, um, the words you use here, compact development and other techniques. Can I walk to work when that happens, right? So, um, I'll end there, because I know people are probably hungry and they wanna go home, so I'll stop there, but thank you.
I just have a suggestion if it's helpful. One is, I was gonna say any concluding remarks from anyone, but that could be another hour. You guys ever watch Wait or listen to Wait, Wait, Don't Tell Me at the end? They're like, you know, this, they go around and everybody's, so I'm gonna model this and see if we can, if we can do this. Just think of your top three items. And not like a narrative, just top three items. So cross jurisdictional infrastructure considerations, that's one for me. Two is education, pilot projects and case studies. And then the third is metrics are key.
If everybody does this as well as you just did, it's gonna be faster than we can write it down. So I'm gonna ask you all to write them down and also send them to us, but that would be really helpful for us.
I think we're recording and we'll have minutes, so.
Awesome. Commissioner Evans, speed round.
Transportation, unified transportation. And, uh, a, a narrative that is about the possibility of tomorrow. And a, a realization that even though we, even though the county does have five districts, five, uh, development districts, they are not unified and they never will be unified.
Great. Christian Moore?
Uh, I just think about, you know, if we got fifteen inches of rain in two days, what happens, right?
Um, and so where do people get food and water? Um, where do people get electricity? Where do we have, uh, communication and connections to do that? Um, and if we build that now, it'll be better for all of us all the time, in addition to what should happen.
I'll try, um, I was, one thing we're gonna talk about is, um. Regional pathways, regional greenways for connectivity, so that people could, because we, we can still reconnect all this disconnected stuff we have. It is possible. Um, just like we've done with the Ravana Trail, um, incentivize green development. And then, um, I just wanna plus one that idea that, uh, I think, Michael, you said this about. Thinking more about not just like the county and the city, but like suburban, urban and rural. And, and it's okay that we have different strategies for those different situations.
Commissioner Moore? Sorry, Murray? Just, just as we have a, um, flood, flood hazard overlay, I think we need a fire hazard overlay. Um, I think we also need and strict, you know, significant incentives for structured parking. And then I think, um, we also need, um, more, more funding between the city and county for technical assistance. So then get more out of grant funding, like programs like VCA, so that we're not leaving money on the table. Awesome.
Cost of doing nothing. Articulation of goals, both internally and externally, as we strive to do this together. And then, uh, the roles, the role of buildings in the solution. I'll be redundant, I'll just give you one. And be one of the strategies that we could have talked to about today, but I would put it in your mind about. Talk about it more in the future. We have talked about it, and that is neighbors, neighborhoods. And how do we make them more resilient by creating unity and connection within them, right, so they can support one another? Uh, Commissioner Vivid has talked about in his neighborhood how he's seeing it going the other way. They're not talking to their neighbors, they don't know their neighbors, and I think we can all relate to, to some of that that's changing. They come in at night to sleep there and you don't see them throughout the day. And so how, how do we do that? How do we encourage that? So there's that stronger connection and create resilience in that neighborhood.
Commissioner Mitch? All right.
Yeah, I can't consolidate my thoughts. I'm all, okay, one thought, stupid thought. Um, there was some discussion that these strategies only slightly overlap. To me, these both strategies are, are the same. I don't, I don't see the difference between the two. I don't know if that's. Just, it seems like you do one.
Right.
All right, I'll, I'll keep it short. Uh, direct the real transportation dollars towards multilateral regional connectivity. Focus development where hazard risk is lowest and, uh, give people access to the rural green space.
Awesome. Wow, I, I couldn't, uh, re- write that down, it was so fast, uh, but it sounded profound. So, I have a lot of ideas, I'm not going to consolidate. Uh, land value tax, or we could call it sprawl tax, uh, we did it for centuries here in Virginia. It's a way of, uh, making leapfrog development financially unfeasible. You just can't do those impact spaces, in fact, to connect financially. Uh, it's not legal, but it could be legal. Uh, it's in the current, it's a recommendation to Charlottesville's legislative packet. Legalize it in our region. Uh, I think would solve our transportation problems as well. The idea of missing small, we talk a lot about missing middle. Uh, there's an architect named Alfred Pooh, was a beautiful graphic showing the missing small. Which are great in rural uses, it's just gorgeous and it's, it's revelatory. You see, you go, oh yeah, we could legalize this and it would be amazing. Please look at that. The positive vision for rural areas and then permit that buy right. What do we want to see in a rural area? Not what we don't, but what would be good for people to be able to put resiliency and then legalize that. Um, neighborhood commercial, that's one of the few things that fell out, uh, between our comprehensive plan and our resoning. We didn't legalize maybe commercial, there's too much putback, sandwich anxiety. That's one thing we can go for with in the city, uh, uh, perfect candidate again. Where they look, look for places that were historically allowed for to use this, and then legalize commercial in those places, especially kind of preservation.
Right, yeah, I'm a fan of that.
Planning land use based on current and future infrastructure, that's something that Charlottesville did in our comprehensive plan. We looked at, where is the infrastructure already? Okay, maybe that's where stuff should go. The limiting dwelling unit per acre measure, uh, we were getting one great project killed because they didn't meet the UVA requirements. So we got rid of it. It's great, right now. Uh, bicycle parking mandate, no vehicle parking, uh, mandate. That was politically relatively easy for anything for us to do, transformative, L T housing, climate, everything. Put the comprehensive plan in the capital improvement plan, it's something we did in Charlottesville over years, staff hated me for it. But it is transformative. When the dollars go to public benefit instead of to random other directions. It makes the plan have teeth, it makes things happen in the real world, stronger. Uh, making a hierarchy of flood resilience and infrastructure, flooding is at this level, this stuff breaks, flooding is at this level, this stuff breaks. A, document what it is, and then B, plan to make it better. Uh, Tobin Hagen has done this, and I think it's a great example. That's what I've got.
Oh, aren't you guys glad? Yeah. Needing comments. Christian, do you run there?
Sure, uh, the media of Gabor, the great steel, I, uh, endorse Michael's, uh, basic premise of starting from a clean slate. Um, you like that? I stole that. Um, the, uh, second thing is looking, uh, is dealing with community, bringing them along. And grasping the, this is, you really need to pay attention to what's gonna happen in twenty years if we do that. Mostly nothing. And third, uh, going back to my original, uh, comment. We need to make sure that as we build this plan, we know how to fly it. And that means implementation strategy as a separate thing that we do, that we spend time thinking about how it fits.
Awesome.
Um, yeah, I'll just say, uh, resilience hubs need, uh, microgrids, uh, mass phone charging infrastructure.
Yep.
And satellite internet. Um, and I hope you guys go talk to people in Asheville when they're less busy.
Awesome.
Um, I also like the kind of not shaming people, I think we have. Because, you know, when we're like, oh yeah, we already know this, like, just start from like. How do you live now? You know, what's great about it and kind of building up, um. The partnership of everyone kind of taking their pieces of the puzzle and not. The city doing everything, the county do, you know, everyone's got like different strategies. And then I think, um. Also just sort of using some of the most vulnerable people as a judge of what we need, like. If you're homeless and something happens, this is what happens if you don't have air conditioning or if you don't, you know, like, just kind of. Starting with the most immediate problems and then working up, um, just to protect citizens that we need to protect.
Great. Reminder quick, I just wanted to, uh, urge clarity, simplicity and positivity in this process. Just so I think everyone's comments are great specifics, but I think you can sometimes lose sight of the high level ones just to, uh. This is a scary path for everyone. I mean, it's an existential thing. I think a lot of people can just kind of hold up and go like, well, it's too late, we can't do anything. So I think making it incremental and really simple and achievable. And I would imagine getting eighty percent of our region to do like ten percent or twenty percent is better than getting ten percent, doing eighty percent. So. Vision's important.
Awesome. Well, just a couple of quick ending things. First of all, thank you. Secondly, be thinking about how we can continue to be helpful. So hopefully this isn't the end of the discussion, conversation. You know, if you have other strategies that you wanna bounce off, I don't know how we physically do that, or email or whatever it is, but. This is great. I mean, I, I think this is really, really fun to see. And, and then the last thing I'll mention. At the risk of having somebody in the staff or something, I mean, hopefully we can do this again on other subjects, uh, and moving forward, so. Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't finish.
Next time somebody has to buy dinner. Thank you, everybody. Oh, yeah, so, yes, thank you. October thirtieth?
Special meeting is October thirtieth.
Awesome. So I will adjourn the, uh, the Amar County Planning Commission till October six, six o'clock.